...to get up 50 times for this delicious breakfast. Did the city of Las Vegas provide the delicious breakfast? Mr. Adams, was this our breakfast that we have provided? Yes. On behalf of the city of Las Vegas and watching every tax dollar, there are no fancy dinners, so here. Anyway, we welcome you all to our special city council meeting of the 26th of February. It's 8:00 a.m. and we like to be on time. And so I'm going to ask you to please turn off or put on airplane mode your cell phones. And are we in compliance? Where is the hello? Are we in compliance with the open meeting law?
We are, thank you.
Thank you very much. Could I call upon you to take attendance or no? We're not doing that. Are we then? We are doing the pledge of allegiance, correct?
Absolutely, thank you.
Is there a flag?
Right there.
Yes, right there.
No. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Would anybody like to volunteer to sing the national anthem? Welcome back. Okay, so we will start with our first public comment. Public comment for anyone who wishes, please. The microphone, I guess, is way back there. Oh, right here, right up front. Anyone who wishes to comment, please come forward, state your name for the record. And seeing none, we will move on now to discussion, possible action regarding identifying and developing new strategic priorities for the city of Las Vegas and revising current priorities. And I would thank Mr. Adams, please.
Madam Mayor, members of the city council, Scott Adams, city manager. This is, we're looking forward to this morning where you acting as city council will work on establishing a new set of priorities for the city to pursue over the next few years. I'm going to go back to the last couple of weeks. We've spent some time, Poonam Mather and I have meeting with each of you individually to talk about the workshop. And at the last city council meeting, I made a presentation where I went back and reiterated what the priorities have been over the last couple of times we've gone through this process so that you'd have a framework of thinking going forward for expectations today. But as we've done in the past, we've always had somebody help us through this process and today is no different. And at this point, I would like to introduce our facilitator for today's activities. Poonam Mather is culminating a 25-year career as a senior executive in the gaming industry, currently serving as executive director of the Elaine P. Nguyen and Family Foundation and operates her own business as a speaker. Within a lengthy list of volunteer and service roles, Poonam has received appointments to statewide leadership positions by the last four governors. She is a champion and advocate for children and public education despite numerous awards and recognition, the role of which she is proudest as mom to her three remarkable sons and one spectacular daughter. So it is my pleasure at this time to introduce our facilitator for today, Poonam Mather.
Thank you. Good morning. Okay, truth is they're not always remarkable and spectacular, just to clarify that. I've asked all of you on the folded note card to draw a picture of your favorite hobby and your favorite food. So while we are continuing, go for it. We've got lots of colors so you can express. It's not a turn-in assignment, you're going to just hold it up. There, we've got lots of colors, you can express at will. Good morning. Good morning, good morning, good morning. So happy, today is the 26th of February, happy one of those. I want to begin by expressing profound gratitude on behalf of 2 million of us. All of you have done what the rest of us are unwilling to do, and that is to get to a level of self-sacrifice, to choose to serve against a very long list of reasons not to do that, and yet you chose to do it anyway. You were here because citizens in a ward selected you as theirs, and now you come together as a group of seven who collectively have an opportunity to be the stewards to define the future for 2 million of us. So I want to honor the role and I want to thank you for doing it because there are only seven of you. There's a couple of things, and I'm going to kick it off to turn it over to Jeremy. I'm going to do a quick lightning round, so this is for all of you as well. Before we get going, let's just get some aspirational juice flowing. So I'm going to ask first the seven of you and then every other person in this room to give me one word, just a single word, no hyphens, no paragraphs, no explanation, just one word, expressing your hope for today. That's it. Scott, I'm going to ask you to start.
Vision.
Vision.
Plans.
Plans.
Collaboration.
Collaboration.
Neighborhoods.
Neighborhoods.
Unity.
Unity.
Solutions.
Solutions. Informed.
Legacy.
Legacy.
Progress.
Progress.
Productivity.
Productivity.
Achievable.
Achievable.
Integrity.
Integrity. You, sir.
Sustainability.
Sustainability. You, ma'am.
Peace.
Peace, beautiful. Okay, we're going to do it quick. Vigor brevity, go. Equity. Clarity. Clarity. Opportunity. Strategy. Success. Clarity. Future. Teamwork. Preparedness. Roadmap.
Priorization.
Priorization. Direction. Clarity. Vision.
Knowledge.
Knowledge. Clarity.
Connection.
Connection. Communication. Love, thank you. You, ma'am. Rebecca. One word that would, would it come back to you? You get the theme, it's about your hope for today. Motivation. Safety. Inspiration, come back to you. Transformative.
Enlightenment.
Enlightenment. Inspiration. Transparency. Sustainability. Planning. Direction. Progress. Honesty. Alignment. Strategy. Teamwork. Trust. You, sir. Responsibility. We got yours. Success. Plan. Empowerment. Vision. Responsibility. Innovation. Community. Integrity. Recognition. Partnership. We heard from you, yes. Coming, you can't just stand at the door and hope we don't find you. Your word?
My word?
Hope for today.
Oh, happiness.
Happiness.
Gratefulness.
Gratefulness. Bravery. The others have actually run into parking lots, I can't get them. And the nice man who is behind the camera, your word is?
Peace.
Peace, okay. Wow, that was cool. We're, you're all in the right place. We've got some really high and awesome hopes for the day, and let's always begin every day with hopes that are high and positive, and that's what we just did. So that was awesome, thank you. And for those of you that got called on first, sorry. So one thing about strategic planning, I just want to observe that you are really good at this. Now, I recognize that there are four of you new to the council since the last time that we went through this process in 2017. There are a couple of you that were here when we undertook the process in 2013. You may have been the only one that was here when we undertook it in 2011. This city is really good at this. That is not what most municipalities can claim. All of us talk about the importance of being strategic and having plans that align to that strategy. Very few are willing to do what it takes to get there. So this is an exercise where we're building on a significant track record of success. And I may give you one example, just to sort of make the point. It is not common that municipalities around the country declare education as a priority. It is not our lane, it belongs to the school district. There's a laundry list of very good reasons why a municipality ought not to declare education, except in this group, a decade ago, people sitting in seats that you now occupy, there was this malicious conclusion that it mattered so much that you were going to declare it as a strategic initiative. Fast forward, you are setting a gold standard for what it looks like to make improvements in education by using the levers that are uniquely available to you. Would you agree? Yeah, you are setting a gold standard. That's not by accident, it wasn't the simple act of saying it out loud. It took that, it took leaders to say it out loud first. Then it takes a city manager who is 100% committed to delivering on whatever you say. He then takes it to 20 department heads and 3,600 employees, and that's where the work gets done, to deliver on your vision. So the chain of events is pretty simple. Leaders got to declare it. Once leaders declare it, you've got a very committed city manager, who knows, he's got and basically is the conductor of a band of 3,600. And he will make sure that with the song sheet that you declare, he's going to make that, he's going to make it happen. That is the pledge, that's the pinky promise. Do you still do him pinky promises?
Sort of.
Sort of, sort of, but it's not dinner. Or else I'm supposed to say that out loud. Sorry, he doesn't want you to know that pinky promise is really a thing. So that's the hope and the goal and the intention for today. Is it four of you are new, the seven of you are together?
I don't feel new.
In this, in this moment.
Notwithstanding the warranties that inevitably expire as we get older, I feel your pain,
sir. And so what we've done is our level best to provide you input, right? It's important for leaders to know what has happened before. And so at the last city council meeting, Scott alluded to, he talked you through the strategic priorities, four of them, that were articulated in 2013, that literally drove the work of the city. He talked you through the six priorities that were collectively articulated by the council in 2017. Four of you are new. So it could be that we get through the day and you affirm what others have previously said. It's an option. But what will be different is that it will be now true of the seven of you. That's the key, right? Here's what we need from leaders, clarity, because it can come from no other place. And so what we have are seven, well, six plus one, seven, six who ran in wards. So today, the thing I'm going to ask you to do is to look up, because you are selected by your ward, and what is also true is you are one-seventh of the collective that will steward us to our future. So that's the, I want you to look up, right? It's the wavelength that is higher in terms of one of the strategic priorities that the city should focus on. And in the implementation, trust that your staff will come back with the differences in implementation for each of those priorities relative to wards. Does that make sense? Okay. So you had input, so he has given you and talked you through. You've also got your master plan, 2050, there's a master plan. So it's another source of input. You've spoken over the months and years to, I don't even know how many people, citizens, who have elected you, some who may not have elected you, but you've spoken to them, so you bring all of that life experience. And then I want you to bring every second of every life experience that you've ever had, because there are only seven of you. And so we don't want to leave any of that wisdom behind, because it's super useful to steward the future for our entire community. So that's sort of my plea. Yep, okay. So to just warm us up a teeny bit, I asked you to draw your favorite hobby and your favorite food. So who would proudly like to show us theirs so we can try to guess? Let's see yours. Okay, favorite hobby, guess what her favorite hobby is?
Spending time with family.
Take care of the family.
There's a whole, I don't know if you can see this, it's a whole bunch of stick figures, a whole bunch of anatomically correct, really well-drawn stick figures. And do we have a guess? Family was one, is it?
Yes, yeah. Spending with them, I couldn't come up with a basic hobby, because I really don't have one.
That's a hobby, okay. And then the favorite food?
That symbol.
Is this, is this, oh, is a symbol. So here's what the mayor did. She's like, I don't know how to draw that, but I know the drive-through from which I buy it, so let me do the golden arches, because she's all about getting it done, it doesn't matter how we get it done, we get it. So the favorite food now in the bottom right-hand corner says Big Mac. Elegant, elegant.
Classy lady.
Who else? Who else? Here we go. Councilwoman Sim, oh, this is great, look, used colors. Can we just observe that? What is the favorite hobby? I think it's this one.
Bicycle riding.
She's a biker, huh?
Bike riding.
A tricycle, though.
I was going to say, please don't say tricycle.
It is a beautiful bike, that is a blue bike with a purple basket.
Yes.
Yep, and so bike riding is your hobby. And then your favorite food is this. What is that?
Noodles.
You're going to guess, is it noodles?
It's spaghetti with caviar.
This, for all of you, is spaghetti with caviar, in case you're going to draw that later. Thank you. Who else? Thank you.
I don't get everybody's name, so.
Here we go. Councilwoman.
Draw, draw, draw.
Anthony, this is so cute. He is a very organized man, so on one side above the picture, he's a little nervous that you may not recognize that it's a picture, so above that, he wrote the word hobby. So we know, so this is the hobby. What is the hobby?
Pickleball.
Is it pickleball?
Yeah.
Golf.
No. Golf.
Hole-in-one, baby.
It is a hobby and his fantasy, right here. Hole-in-one, baby.
Two hole-in-ones, that's on the record.
Lest any of you forget that, two holes in one. And his favorite food?
Greek food.
Ask me.
What is it?
Greek food.
Is it Greek food?
Oh, it does look like a gyro meat.
Is it a gyro meat? Is it Greek food, gyro?
Down here?
Very good.
Very good. This is, it's, he actually has chronicled the process of getting to the gyro. So here's your leg of lamb, shavings fall on a plate, transferred to his meal. So he is all about process as well. That was awesome. And when you're that specific, who needs color? Like, seriously, who else? Here we go. Beautiful. So I love that every square inch of her sheet is used up, because I'm glad you're working through the shyness and the timidity. It's a good thing. So favorite food, well, that's not fair, because you wrote it across the top.
Oh, okay. Meatballs and spaghetti.
Spaghetti and meatballs. And if you were, it is a pink spaghetti and meatballs dish, and in case you're not sure, it says spaghetti and meatballs across the top. And then here is her hobby.
Family.
Yeah, it is.
Oh, your family looks better than mine.
So the mayor's nervous that the councilwoman's family is better-looking than her stick figures, and they've got names on them as well. It's beautiful, thank you.
Thank you.
And I know Councilman Knudsen was so excited about this that he actually folded his pictures on the inside, because he's so proud. He said to me, I don't draw and I don't have a hobby, I am now freaked out. But you know what? You did a beautiful job, which hobby and, and food?
Pizza.
Pizza and.
And family.
Family and pizza. It's a very simple and powerful image, could be like a petroglyph, almost, yeah? Here is the family. We know the family, so we actually recognize these two superhuman short people. And this is pizza, because when you're raising two super-short heroes, you eat pizza a lot, because they deliver it to your door. I remember those days. Ready? Oh!
Oh, nice.
And if you weren't sure that she was a teacher, she has given herself a star.
I was covering the name of my dish.
And frankly, if you don't wag your own tail, that's one sad puppy, so she's good. Favorite hobby, favorite food?
Turkey?
No.
Turkey?
Close.
Come see, come see.
I can eat it with turkey.
Is it a chicken?
It's a chicken.
It's a chicken.
It's a chicken.
Turkey dish, but it's called mole.
Mole, okay. And then the hobby is?
Family.
Is it travel?
Travel with my family.
It's travel with family, beautiful. So look at this anatomically correct Samsonite, and apparently her family rides on top of their luggage when they go places, it's awesome. And then lots of detail, beautiful. You deserved a star. But actually, yeah, it was, because she wrote mole on there. And then Councilman Creer is hoping, I've forgotten him, I'll knock him back, but it ain't going to happen, my friends. So here we are, we have.
Travel.
Is travel the hobby?
It is, that's a plane.
That's a plane?
It's more like a scale fish. And then the tail, the tail number is LVW5 for Las Vegas Ward 5.
Oh, got it, got it. And then what's the favorite food?
Thank you.
Pizza.
You think it's pizza?
Pizza.
Pizza con salchichas.
Yep. So if you would like to see the branded line art plane branded with LVW5, it's up here. And then this is pizza, which is pretty good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. So ready to get the work done, right? Talked about different sources of input. So you had a review of here's what your predecessors collectively declared as strategic priorities in 2013, and then you had another review of here's what your predecessors collectively declared in 2017. You have your Las Vegas master plan, 2050, that's been a source of input. You're going to bring every moment of your life experience to this. And we're also now going to focus on one additional specific source of input, which was the survey done by the fellow that's going to come up next. So as he makes his way up, there he is. It's hard to know how to introduce this man, because, and I'm not sure he needs an introduction, but I'm going to do it anyways. It helps to be a third-generation Nevadan, because that gives you an indication of why he cares so deeply about the things that he works on. He's a principal analyst with Applied Analysis, and beyond that, he's the founder. It's been since 1997 that Applied Analysis has been bringing really smart thinking to solve Nevada's biggest challenges. When you roll by the stadium, the thinking underneath that gave rise to the stadium was Jeremy's. As we look at the struggle Lisa Morris Hibler knows firsthand, as we are now attempting to stand up a funding formula for K-12 education in the state that hadn't been touched in a half-century, Jeremy was the brains that we needed to go to to get it done. He's got a long list of clients, a long list of accomplishments, a long list of awards, but today, we've asked him to talk you through the survey that he just recently conducted late last year. So without any more, Jeremy, we're out. You should clap for him, it's sort of, yeah. Sort of what we do.
Good morning, Mayor. Members of the city council, thank you for the opportunity to be here today. Just a quick question, do I have a clicker here, guys, that I can advance?
Oh, it's right here.
Oh, thank you.
I have your clicker.
Thanks. I should start by expressing just a little bit of thanks, both to Poonam for that wonderful introduction. She's always so kind and our community is very lucky to have her, as is the city. I'd also like to express my thanks to the city council for the opportunity to be here today, is asked to answer a few questions, and so I'll try to provide a bit of a backdrop for your conversation today. And I'd also like to express my thanks to your staff, who were instrumental throughout this process over the past year, and were there to answer questions at every turn. I'm going to walk through a presentation here today, that there's a much larger book that I understand that you've all have been provided or had the opportunity to look at. Seems Mr. Ameling has one sitting there. I wasn't going to try and go through the 200 pages, probably painful for you and for me to try and go through that level of detail. However, Mr. Adams asked that I do, is really highlight some high-level results and really sort of focus on the conclusions drawn from that analysis. So there's three parts to my presentation today. The first sort of hits on some high-level results, the second talks about what we did and how we got to where we are today. Part two talks about what constituents want the city to look like in the future. And then number three is what citizens think the city's priorities should be overall. When we started this process back in April of last year, the goal was to ask questions of citizens that would ultimately inform the development of the master plan. And so that was really the primary focus. There were lots of questions, arguably too many questions, that we had to ask, but that's because the city is very data-driven and wants to understand what the citizens are looking for before it tries to craft things. So we tried to include as much of that as we could. But then what we came, what came back in this late summer, really sort of August timeframe, was that we needed to dig deeper, that the city is not one thing, and that its citizens are not one thing, and that the diversity of our community provides strength and is really part of the tapestry that makes the city of Las Vegas great. And they asked us to go back and do what we could, dig deeper at the individual ward level, to ask all, many of the same questions, not every one of the same questions, but as many as we could at the ward level. And so what you'll see is, I'll provide some of that as we go through. Then a few, a month or so ago, I was asked to sort of, okay, we would like a presentation to hit some of the highlights on that, and so we prepared that presentation, and that presentation kind of morphed into what you see today. Those parts two and three are really trying to take a look at what the survey told us and try to glean as much as we could in terms of direction and in terms of focus relative to the priorities of the city and what residents want to see on a go-forward basis. So with that, I'll start with part one, which is this general report and general approach to what we did in these high-level results. Overall, there were over 1,700 surveys that were conducted of residents in the city of Las Vegas. Those were conducted only for folks that are adults, 18 years of age or older, and they were conducted both in English and in Spanish. You'll see that they were done two different ways. The initial survey is shown there in April of 2019, where wards were not identified. 420 surveys were done then, and then you see that the individual ward surveys were done sometime after that, through August, September timeframe, for another, about 1,300 surveys conducted overall. The attempt was to have it be dispersed, in fact, the requirement was to have it be balanced for each one of the wards to reflect, to attempt to reflect to the best of our ability, attitudes, opinions, and beliefs for each of those individual areas. When we combined all that, the margin of error is about 3% on the total, a very low margin of error at the 95% confidence interval. For each one of the wards, it's a bit higher, about 7% overall. We do believe that the responses and the results are both compelling and valid for purposes of our discussion today. The analysis, as I mentioned earlier, is a couple hundred pages long and includes a number of cross-tabulations and a number of more detailed conclusions than what I'm going to provide for you today. However, these are the six sort of areas, sort of, the six areas that we focused on, and so they're the ones that I'm going to focus on for purposes of our conversation today. They include general satisfaction, how do people feel about the city that they live in and about the neighborhood that they live in. I heard that word come up, it came up a great deal in the surveys that we responded. While folks in this room refer to things oftentimes as wards, people refer to them as neighborhoods oftentimes. They view that in terms of their sphere or their bubble. Talked a lot about public safety, came up a lot with your staff, it also came up a lot among respondents to the survey. Public safety sometimes can include many things, oftentimes it's highly correlated with police protection, but it also is emergency medical response, people wanting to know that when they're in need, that someone's going to be there to help them. Openness and inclusivity, this was a part of what the staff included in almost all the conversations that we had. The question was, how inclusive was the city in both in terms of the provision of its government, but also the services that are provided? Sense of community, infrastructure and amenities, which is a giant category, we probably could have had five surveys just on infrastructure and amenities alone, and we've certainly done some research relative to that overall. We do believe that the responses and the results are both compelling and valid for purposes of our discussion today. The analysis, as I mentioned earlier, is a couple hundred pages long and includes a number of cross-tabulations and a number of more detailed conclusions than what I'm gonna provide for you today. However, these are the six sort of areas, sort of, the six areas that we focused on. And so they're the ones that I'm gonna focus on for purposes of our conversation today. They include general satisfaction. How do people feel about the city that they live in and about the neighborhood that they live in? Heard that word come up. It came up a great deal in the surveys that we responded. While folks in this room refer to things oftentimes as wards, people refer to them as neighborhoods oftentimes. They view that in terms of their sphere or their bubble. Talked a lot about public safety. Came up a lot with your staff. It also came up a lot among respondents to the survey. Public safety sometimes can include many things. Oftentimes, it's highly correlated with police protection, but it also is emergency medical response. People wanting to know that when they're in need, that someone's going to be there to help them. Openness and inclusivity. This was a part of what the staff included in almost all the conversations that we had. The question was, how inclusive was the city in both in terms of the provision of its government, but also the services that are provided? Sense of community, infrastructure, and amenities, which is a giant category. We probably could have had five surveys just on infrastructure and amenities alone. And we've certainly done some research relative to that overall. And then goals and concerns, probably the things that will ultimately inform your conversation here today. While that yellow, I guess we attempted to use primary colors. That's gonna be a little bit difficult to see, but we'll do our best overall relative to that. Which of the following closely matches your satisfaction with quality of life in the city of Las Vegas? This is each one of the wards that are outlined in what you'll see here in this survey. And again, I've just tried to pick out some of the key questions that were asked. If we go through it overall, many of my questions will be laid out in this format. You can kind of get some idea of how the city's responses were laid out at the ward level and then for the city as a whole. Oftentimes, we'll spend time looking at it in terms of satisfied versus dissatisfied, or belief or disbelief in a question. There will always be respondents who don't want to give us an answer, who will feel that they can't make a decision relative to a question. And that's what you're seeing there in yellow, neither satisfied or dissatisfied. For the city as a whole, you'll see that that number is approaching about 76% of folks that are saying they are satisfied with the city. Yes, there are certainly going to be folks that have a lower number than that. And we got a lot of commentary, and when we had open-ended questions, we found that people wanted to tell us a lot about their feelings with the city. And I'll talk more about that as I go. But I think a theme that you're gonna see throughout my presentation is there is a general satisfaction with what is being provided by the city. There's a lot of conversation about progress, and I know that that's a lot about what this discussion is about. That's why we have priorities and master plans. So perhaps we'll leave our community a little bit better for those that come with their neighborhoods. They're very happy with the cities and the services that are provided. And preservation of those services and preservation of that quality of life is relatively... 20 years now, I would suggest to you that that is a relatively strong response to the quality of life that people have in the city. We asked them for additional detail. Please tell us about the reasons that you live in the city of Las Vegas. What is extremely important to the green, that is a green color on the left-hand side. That's why it's got the little box. And I've also highlighted the ones that are not important at all. Remarkable here is that, you know, you see some of them. Cost of living, safety and crime, family, employment are the things that are most important to the folks in the city of Las Vegas. It is the reason why they want to live here. And many of the things that we talk about often, right? And when we ask folks, and we're gonna get to it as we continue to go through this, what are the things that are great about the city and what are the things that are not so great? Is it a great place to live? Is it a great place to work? Is it a great place to retire? Is it a great place to raise your children? You know, oftentimes, we find, and I don't think it's gonna come as any surprise, that there are concerns relative. The concern that we get as much as any deals with education, or the quality of education, particularly among families that have children. Although, we also are not one thing as a city. You'll also see in the far-right-hand side that for a number of people, we asked them, what is the reason that you live here? Education was 20% of the people. Said, no, that's not important to me at all, right? Because it's a differential in terms of what people's views are overall. Please tell us about the reasons that you live in the city. I have tried to find the best way to summarize these at the ward level, because I know the question is going to come up overall, and I know there's a great deal of interest. So this is the way we were able to do it in the book, and so I've tried to highlight it here as well. In terms of the number-one reason, the number-two reason, and the number-three reason that folks gave in every single category. You'll see that cost of living, crime, employment, and family were the four that came up over and over and over again as the most extremely important things that were there. We allowed respondents to answer this question and to give us anything that they wanted to ultimately include and then categorize them. But ultimately, these are the responses. What factors might cause you to consider relocating to another city? We also asked the opposite side of the question. There were a number of those that came up. And you'll see that these were more unified in the responses. Number one for every single ward was either safety and crime, which was highest on the list, or the cost of living, which was what we got out of Ward 1. You'll see that those switched when we got to reason number two. And then healthcare came in at number three, and it had a tendency to come up often in a lot of the analyses. Please select which most closely matches your satisfaction with the quality of life in the city of Las Vegas as a place to live, a place to work, a place to retire, and a place to raise children. You'll notice here that this is where we had some of those changes that ultimately existed, right? The place to raise children is dramatically different than a place to live, a place to work, and a place to retire within the city of Las Vegas. Again, we are not one thing. When we asked that same question, just to sort of put it at the ward level to get sort of an idea of how those play out, you'll see that when we say ranking extremely satisfied or somewhat satisfied with the quality of life in the city of Las Vegas is a place to live. People love living here. Our economy is doing better. No longer do we have an unemployment rate of 14%. We now have an unemployment rate below 4%, right? Place to work is good, right? We are now among the nation's highest in terms of retiree and migration. A decade ago, in 2008, when we looked at the data, about 11% of the folks that surrendered a driver's license in southern Nevada was 60 years of age or older. Today, that number is 18 and a half percent. We have now regained our position as among the heaviest in-migration locations anywhere in the United States for retirees. We expect that trend to continue. Again, you notice on the far-right-hand side that to raise children remains relatively low. Obviously, part of a place to live, but something that is distinguished among the residents. Why would you not recommend out-of-state friend or relative to move to the city? We asked this question, again, open-ended. There are all types of responses that we ultimately got. Right at a word cloud, because it was the easiest for purposes of our conversation here today. But these are some of the things that came up. And crime has a tendency to rise to the top. It is something that residents believe is extremely important and also a risk for their individual communities. Now, we asked all kinds of questions. Would you recommend someone moving to the city? You know, why, why not? And we tried to dig into this. I don't have time today to go into each one of those. But putting in some of the ones that were the highest, right? The crime, education, crowds, traffic, some of those type of things resonated, probably not much of a surprise to the people sitting in this room. In terms of a sense of community, now, this was the second element of the question. How often do you participate in community organizations, nonprofits, interest groups, clubs, et cetera, right? Participation is relatively low overall. Now, I don't, maybe relatively low is not the right way to say it, because I doubt that you'd go to a whole lot of communities around the United States where this number would be very high overall. But if we look at the city of Las Vegas, those participating in some type of organization once a week, multiple times a month, once a year, a never, you get kind of the sense of how that plays out, right? The nevers on the far-right-hand side of our graph are just low. About half of people don't. When we asked folks, where is that point of connectivity for you overall? There was one overwhelming answer came up, and there were many answers. Again, we are not one thing. People find ways to participate in the community, in their community, many, many different ways, which is shown here, and I think is relatively compelling. But church groups come up overall, more than any other, in our community, and I thought that was worth showing. How often do you talk with your neighbors? Never, once per week are the reds on the far-right-hand side. Daily, four to six times per week. You get the idea sort of shown from left to right, right? Our connectivity with our neighbors has a tendency to be somewhat low, but nonetheless, and also somewhat differential between those individual wards. This was one that we came up along that same line of questioning that I thought was worth including as part of our conversation. When we asked 1,245 folks, what is the one thing my neighborhood is missing, right? Sense of community was number one overall in that response, right? And that's probably gonna be, you know, Puna mentioned it. I'm third generation. I'm the parent of four, excuse me, three, fourth-generation children, right? You know, that sense of community isn't absent for me. But we also understand that my family is something of the exception to the rule, right? The state of Nevada, and particularly southern Nevada, has the distinction of having the fewest people that live here actually being born here of any major metropolitan area in the United States. And for some, that seems to be a negative, that promotes a sense of, or lack of a sense of community, a lack of sense of connection. I sort of see it as the opposite, to be honest to you. This is the community that we have chosen, many of us. This is the community that people move to out of choice, to find a better way of life. But that sense of community has a tendency to be absent, at least in terms of the responses that we got. And so I don't, I think we wanna be cautious, at least I wanted to be cautious, not to ignore that overall. A little hard to see there in the yellow, but the third of our major bubbles is public safety overall. Do you feel safe in the city of Las Vegas? Very safe is that dark green color. Moderately safe is shown there in that green, that lighter green color. And those ones that are moderately safe or moderately, very unsafe are shown in the red and the dark red on the far-right-hand side, right? As you saw earlier, public safety is paramount to residents' responses overall. And if we look at it, we see that about 70% of folks indicate in the city of Las Vegas that they feel safe overall, right? This one resonates significantly, and the differentials are worth your time and attention. I do wanna just draw up one distinction here as well. This is, do you feel safe in the city of Las Vegas? This is, how safe do you feel in your neighborhood overall, right?
Mine has guns.
And if we look at this and we see it, what we get is that folks actually feel safer in their neighborhoods than they feel overall in the city of Las Vegas, interestingly enough. Is that a perception? Is it a reality? I don't know the answer to that question. But with public safety, I don't know that that distinction necessarily matters. If people are actually safe, if they don't feel safe, these are obviously concerns that have resonated into the thing that, again, going back to what we saw earlier. The thing that would make me consider leaving my community is public safety overall. Do you consider your neighborhood high, medium, or low crime area overall? This is, the city as a whole is shown on the left. I consider it low at about 60%, high at about 9%, and a medium area, about 34% of all responses. You can also see by ward, the ones that believe that they live in a low-crime area versus those that believe they live in a high-crime area. It varies relatively significantly between those individual wards and is probably worthy of time and attention. Again, as people individualize those neighborhoods and their view of them. How confident are you in the capability of police to protect you from crime? Again, about 55% were confident, right? About 30% were not confident overall. And you can see how members of each ward, residents of each ward, distinguished between that very confident and that not confident by ward overall in terms of those totals. How confident are you in the police to respond quickly to a phone call for an emergency or a non-emergency? Again, confident was about 57%, and non-confident was about 31%. Not a whole lot of distinction between those two. But here, there was a distinction, and I thought it was worth mentioning for purposes of our conversation today. How confident are you in fire or other emergency services to respond quickly to an emergency phone call? There is something that is distinguished between a crime and the response to a crime versus the response to an emergency. Eight out of every 10, to almost 20% more of respondents indicated that when they pick up the phone and they dial 911 because they're having an emergency, that someone is going to show up there and respond in a reasonable amount of time. Something that is working in the city. The fourth portion of our survey that I wanted to just hit on a few of the highlights was infrastructure and amenities. There are many things to mention here. Please assess the quality of the following in the city of Las Vegas. We asked a lot of questions around this. I'm just gonna highlight a few of them. Parks and recreation, housing utility, transportation, healthcare, and education. Again, education is going to be at the bottom. That is completely consistent with what we saw overall. These are citywide responses of 1,700 city of Las Vegas respondents. Parks and recreation services were extremely high overall in terms of the quality that folks are receiving. Housing has become, obviously, an increasing concern. I know there's been a lot of conversation around that, the city, with only 60% of folks believing that the quality and accessibility to housing is significant. That's 40% of folks that have concern there, worth noting. Utilities, transportation, we talked about that. There were some differentials overall. I was surprised to see healthcare as low as it was relative to this. Even though we have made some degree of progress, it still remains relatively low, with only about 46% of respondents indicating that it is either excellent or good in the city. And fewer than 30% of respondents indicating education is good or excellent in the city. If we look at it on a ward-by-ward level here, please assess the quality of the following in the city of Las Vegas. This is just good or excellent, right? You can see where everything falls. And it is, it's not uniform, but it is very similar overall in terms of good or excellent quality, with parks and recreation almost, excuse me, always being number one, housing always being number two, and then some mixing of things in transportation, utilities, and healthcare, but education always being last on the list. Please tell us if you have ever used any of the following parks, amenities, other than sports fields during the past year. In the broader survey, there's a great deal of detail of what people are using and what people are not using. I have not even attempted to try and go through all of that. But those walking trails, in particular, open spaces, picnics, playgrounds, you can see the level of use that people are getting out of those amenities, significant overall. Overall, how would you rate the condition of city parks as excellent, good, average, or fair? Again, you get the idea. I think for purposes of this, just pointing out those that are poor or terrible on the far-right-hand side are very small percentages overall. And they're all pretty close to that margin of error at the ward level versus the city of Las Vegas, which is in excess of 70% overall. How safe do you feel in the city of Las Vegas's parks overall? Again, you see that those numbers on the far-right-hand side grow a little bit in terms of having some increased concern for safety. But at the citywide level, again, we're talking about over 70% of folks that feel safe in the parks. Openness and inclusivity was, again, a big element of the survey overall. So I'd like to just walk through each one of these briefly. And again, we didn't do all of them, but I wanted to make sure that we pointed out a few of these. In the last 12 months, did you or a member of your immediate household experience discrimination? Or were you or a member of your immediate family refused, refused, excuse me, services or treated unfairly because of race or color, age, credit history, or gender? When we looked at each one of these, I put up the 61% overall that said none of these. And respondents were allowed to have multiple respondents, which is why we had 2,100, almost 2,100 responses overall, right? I've had a number of questions, not only in terms of this survey, but in other surveys that have been provided, that we've worked on, or other presentations that we've given. And this question continues to come up about discrimination and lack of inclusion overall, particularly on an economic standpoint within our community, which may just be the questions that relate more to the "I" get as opposed to overall. But definitely still some of that in our community that is worthy of our attention. If you said yes to any of those individual questions, if that was the question that was answered, where did that discrimination take place? Employment in a private business and law enforcement? Getting credit or some type, getting a loan, something along those lines? Or some type of consumer activity? You see where those. And again, we allowed for multiple responses that were here. But 17% of those respondents that indicated that they did have some type of, they faced some type of discrimination was more in that economic range in terms of employment overall, still within our community today. How would you rate the city of Las Vegas as an open and inclusive place for people of different race, ethnicity, sexual orientation, gender or gender identity? City of Las Vegas, 77% of respondents indicated that it was either extremely good or somewhat good, with only a very small portion, rounded to zero, indicating that it was bad or extremely bad. And it doesn't mean it's the same in each and every location. You can see that there are notable differences that are outside of the margin of error relative to this on a ward-by-ward basis. Still work to be done, but this is the baseline for purposes of our analysis here today. Finally, relative to the questions that were asked of survey respondents, there were goals and concerns. What were your goals and concerns? Please rank the issues the city of Las Vegas should prioritize over the next 30 years. Number one was public safety as the highest priority by a fairly healthy margin. Number two was healthcare. Number three was education and youth development. And you see the balance, housing going all the way down to community affairs. We did it by ward. I tried to find an easy way to do this, to get them all on one page. I was afraid the fonts would be too small, so I put it on two pages for purposes of our discussion. But you get the idea. They are not always uniform either. The city of Las Vegas and its residents are not one thing. They do not share one concern. They do not have one view of the future overall. But common themes, healthcare, education, public safety, housing, youth development, are all included there. Finally, relative to this sort of line of questioning, we asked the question, if I could change just one thing about my city? And I will tell you, we tried to give the same instructions that Puna gave to all of you. I just want one word. I just want one thing. You'd be amazed how many people wanted to talk for 20 minutes when we asked them to give us one word about the thing that they wanted to change. Nonetheless, if I could change one thing about the city, it would be better... Nonetheless, if I could change one thing about the city, it would be better education, homelessness, affordability, less crime were the ones that came up. And there was a lot. We tried to organize them here, but you see the things that the community continues to be concerned about today. I was particularly impressed by the people that wanted to say they would change one thing, they would change the climate. Good luck with that one here today. If you can do that, I will be very impressed overall, although I kind of like it. The part two, what constituents want the city of Las Vegas to look like in the future? This sort of required us to go through the entire analysis again and try to, not only the tidbits Mr. Adams requested, but try to draw that into conclusions about what folks were trying to tell us about the future that they wanted. And so these are the eight that we came up with in going through that process. Number one, it is less about progress and more about preservation. As much as I'd love to sit here and tell you that the residents of the city of Las Vegas can see into the future and really want that better future for everyone, they do want that future, but they want to make sure that they don't do it at the expense of the future that they're going to have tomorrow in the city. Preserving the quality of life that the city of Las Vegas offers, the city of Las Vegas offers and they value, to me, is paramount in their responses across the board. The future is tomorrow. It is not 30 years from now. For residents, it is about what's going to happen tomorrow. It's about the congestion that I face when I get on the streets. It's whether I feel safe tomorrow. It's whether that new park is in my community or whether I have clean bathrooms in the communities that I'm in, which people did spend a fair amount of time talking to us about. There's a certain degree of cognitive dissonance, which I imagine is a real challenge for purposes of this city council. Everybody wants there to be all kinds of improvements, but paying for them or who gets the value of those improvements is important, right? Oftentimes, we hear, we're all about fixing the schools, we're willing to do that, but we want that to be the schools in our community, not the schools in a different community, because it is so neighborhood-oriented overall. This is the community we have chosen. Remembering why comes up, right? We often get times where, I moved to Las Vegas because the taxes are lower. I moved to Las Vegas because the cost of living was lower. I moved to Las Vegas because the traffic congestion wasn't like what it was in Los Angeles. We moved here because of the quality of life. My family moved here in 1905 to be able to have a better job. My father's family immigrated from Cuba in the late 1950s and moved here in the late 1960s because my grandfather believed that his kids would have a better life, that I would have a better life. And you know what? He was right. I'm going to have a much better life here than I would have had otherwise but for this community overall. Remembering why is what I think residents are asking. Need to justify the benefits of growth more and more, there's no doubt. And in the survey, other detailed portions of it, the community has indicated that growth has generally been good for them overall. That is progress. They associate growth with progress. However, they are also now associating growth with the challenges that come with it, stresses on our infrastructure, overcrowding in our schools, and is that growth being pain or progress? Community is going to have to continue to justify why it's growing, how it's growing, and that it's growing in a way that does not diminish the quality of life for the residents that are here already. A sense of community and a sense of pride. Oftentimes, what we found is that people are very proud of living in this community. Sometimes, particularly from folks outside of this community, they think that we have things to apologize for, our way of life, or the economy and how it's developed, or something along those lines. I didn't get that sense from respondents at all. I think they want more of a sense of community because they love the community that they have chosen. They want it to be everything that it is today, and to the extent that it can be more. They have a sense of pride in that overall. Our community has nothing to apologize for as we continue to do the best we can for the greatest number of people. They expect to have a city that is both opportunistic and strategic overall, when opportunities present themselves, new businesses, new up development, things that could happen in the city, the ability to make progress. They expect the city to be ready, willing, and able to do that, but at the same time, to be thinking strategically about how to fix longer-term challenges overall. It's a very difficult thing to do. I think your residents expect that you can do both. And number eight, I would say is the theme that I had from sort of the beginning to the end of my presentation, is the city and the residents are not one thing. Painting them all with a single brush, I think, is a very dangerous game, and that came through very much in the responses that we had overall. Finally, in trying to assess what the citizens think the priorities should be overall, these are the ones I would offer to you. Preserve quality of life and hold the line where you can. There's a real fear that increased cost of living, increased social challenges that we have in our community is going to become increasingly problematic. Create opportunities for all residents to thrive, that we need to find ways. When we looked at this previously and have done these analyses, education and jobs have a tendency to flip-flop back and forth, right? Right now, our unemployment rate is low, but there's an expectation that we'll be able to keep our economy strong and keep it going forward, and that we'll be able to create opportunities for the folks that live here, not necessarily newcomers, to be able to have those opportunities when they enter the workforce or when they retire. Make Las Vegas among the safest cities in America, right? That is a bold challenge to have, but we heard it over and over. I know the sheriff and all the police officers that put their life on the line every single day do it with exactly that intention. That challenge is a difficult one. I believe that your residents want that to be a priority. Increase access to quality healthcare. This is one that came up overall. It probably is self-explanatory. Have an expectation of equality, inclusion, and acceptance, right? For so long, this was an initiative. We want to get to this point. What we heard, I think, more than anything else from respondents is this should now be the expectation. There shouldn't be tolerance for things where we don't have equality, where we don't have inclusion, or where there isn't exception. This should be what we do, not what we aspire to do. Number six, sort of, maybe a bit of hyperbole here, and I'll take that, but take on a war on poverty. Go after it, right? Oftentimes, what we hear from residents is the things that they see in our community that are symptoms to the challenges that we have. I think more and more people are recognizing that the virus that we are dealing with is poverty. It manifests itself in so many different ways in our community, homelessness, hunger, those type of things. We have got to combat it at its source overall, and I believe that's the priority that the residents are indicating. Maintain financial responsibility and assure asset maximization. This seemed to come up a lot. Before we build the next thing, let's make sure we're getting everything out of the amenities that we have, right? We need to make sure that we are letting citizens know about all of the things that are available in the city, all the things that they can take advantage of. Sometimes, if they don't know, they can't utilize that, and then they want to go develop the next thing at a higher cost, which came up somewhat in some of the responses. And number eight, that I think the priority is that they want the city to be a partner in all ways, a can-do, will-do city that is looking for ways, looking for opportunities to continue, frankly, the prosperity that this city has had on a go-forward basis. With that, Madam Mayor, members of the city council, again, thank you very much for the opportunity to be here. I don't know if I'm supposed to take questions. I'm happy to do it if that's appropriate to do. I know you're on a schedule, so whatever is easiest, I'm happy to do.
First of all, thank you, Jeremy. I mean, we've watched you grow and develop in everything you're doing in your company, and we're so proud as you've integrated yourself and the work that you all do into so many facets of what is positive in this community. Your parents and your grandparents, may they know how much we appreciate you. So thank you. I don't know, are there any? I think only because we have a very full agenda. Certainly, I know we all have your number and we have the data information, which we appreciate. To me, it is a resounding echo of what I have come to believe over all these years, and knowing that Councilman Anthony has served more years than I with my nine years. I mean, I think it's pretty much in line to what we've been looking at through these past. But are there any questions that someone's burning to? Yes, please.
It's more of an observation, but I'm just curious about your thoughts. And this would be maybe for the city manager Adams to comment on as well, is how does, this is perception data, this is how people feel about the community, and I'm just curious about the reality of healthcare, for example, because that's something I spend a lot of time on now, and I've spent a lot of time on education. The reality of what healthcare is in Las Vegas, the reality of what education is, how does reality compare to the perceptions of residents?
Mayor, with your permission, Mr. Adams, would you like me to take that one first? We've done a fair amount of study relative to healthcare. Councilman, I would tell you that I think we have some of the best healthcare professionals in the entire United States in this community. We just don't have enough of them. We tend to think about healthcare in terms of access, quality, and cost of care. In terms of accessibility, I think we still have very legitimate challenges in being at or near the lowest in the nation relative to having, particularly among certain specialties within our community. We just don't have them, right? We still, there are acute areas, gaps within our community that continue to exist today. In terms of, there are many reasons why we are doing things better today than we did about a decade ago. Not the least of those is the result of things like the Affordable Care Act, which has created greater accessibility than it had before. But when you ask me whether or not there is a disconnect between the responses that we got from the 1,700 people that we talked to and the reality in the community, again, I think for some people, there is tremendous access to quality care within our community. It's just not for enough of them yet.
Thank you very much. I think looking and hearing from our council, I think we're okay. And again, to thank you so much. We're so proud of what you've informed us of.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you for this.
The presentation that Jeremy just made, the city manager's confirmed, will be posted somewhere?
Yeah, we'll make that available to each and a council member.
A point of reference, if I could, Poonam, do we need to accept the report formally with a vote? No, thank you very much.
Will it be available to the public?
Yes.
Same, same place, okay. Because I saw you taking pictures. You'll have the whole thing. And I hope that you all had a chance to, that was an extraordinary work product. And so for leaders to have that kind of input that was so stamped a stern through all citizens in the city was a wonderful input. Backing up just a minute, I just want to draw the lines of the overall process, that is the strategic process, strategic planning process for the city of Las Vegas in 2020. We are here today, and the leaders will give us clarity. Coming out of this, your city manager is going to convene department heads, there's about 20 of them, plus whomever else is in that conversation. They will then listen to what direction you've given them and then contemplate what specifically could happen under each of those priority areas, to then bring it back to you for your ratification. So at some point, you will come back after having sort of spoken with directors about it, play back what they've heard, and then offer you some ideas in terms of what actions could be taken, right? So you're still going to control the process, but the job today is not to figure out the how to do it. They will figure out the how to do it. Yours is to be clear about where you want them to go. Fair? Okay, I'm going to completely change gears because it is important to be able to toggle back and forth when you are leaders. So I've got three questions for you. One, what is the thing in your life, in your entire life of which you're the proudest? What is the thing in your entire life of which you're the proudest? That's question number one. Question number two, what is your highest native gift? What is the thing that you just can't help but being excellent at? And let me define that a little bit better. Native gifts are the things that we're born to express in the world, to make the world a better place. That's how I define them. So here is what is true if I am expressing a native gift. It is effortless. I am excellent. And when I am given the opportunity to share that gift, I go to sleep at night with a profound reminder of why I was born. So that's what I mean by native gift. As human beings, we're all really good at a lot of things. We can master many others, but that's very different than the few sayings that represent our native gifts, those things that are effortless, where we are excellent, and every time we express it, we're reminded of why we're born. So share a native gift. Second question. Third question. What word, phrase, do you want to earn as part of your epitaph or engraved on your tombstone? What is it as a word or a phrase that you want to earn as part of your epitaph or engraved on your tombstone? So those are three questions, right? What am I proudest of in my entire life? Two, what is my most brilliant native gift? Three, what do I strive to claim, to earn on my, what do I want to claim as an adjective on my tombstone or epitaph? And whoever wants to go first can go first. I'm not going to force you. There is no order. When you are ready to express, you will. Go! What's the abbreviation for council member?
CW.
CW, thank you. So much easier, thank you. What are you proudest of in your entire life?
My family.
Your family, tell us about it.
Sorry, my family. We are so dysfunctional, I'm so proud.
So you're proud that you actually made it?
Yes.
Yeah, we're still alive, we're still loving each other. It ain't always pretty.
No.
But we are there.
But I love it.
Awesome. What is your highest native gift?
Speaking the truth and keeping it real, whether you like it or not. It's a native gift. Just speak truth.
It is effortless?
Yes.
You are excellent. You are excellent. You are excellent. And the days that you get to do that, you go to sleep at night with a reminder of why you were born. That's what I'm talking about.
Freedom fighter.
That would be it?
On the third one?
Yeah, and then your third question, yes, is what do you want to earn as an adjective in your epitaph or your tombstone?
So a freedom fighter for all, for everything, between your medicine you choose, the people you kiss, and government out of your business, a true freedom fighter.
She was a freedom fighter.
Yeah.
That would be nice, okay. Thank you. Who wants to go next?
I will. I'll go next.
Go.
So the thing I'm most proud of is raising my daughter. She's a great kid.
And how old is your daughter?
She's 27.
And it was just the two of you?
Yes, for a long time.
And so the pride is because she is an awesome human being?
She is.
And she is your awesome human being? And there were times that you weren't sure that she was going to be an awesome human being or that you were doing it right?
That I wasn't doing it right, but I always knew she'd be awesome.
So that's the source of pride. That's the source of pride.
Yes.
We get it. What is your highest native gift?
I think negotiation and communication.
Negotiation and communication. So when you do it, it is effortless, you are excellent, and when you, the days that you get to do that, you go to sleep with a reminder of why you were born. It's a beautiful gift to have on a team. And what would you like to earn on your epitaph?
Work to make the world a better place than leave the world a better place than when I came.
So can I just claim it for you? Made the world a better place? Can I just declare it?
That's it.
Okay, let's do that. You made the world better. Beautiful, thank you. Who would like to go next?
I can go. So my proudest accomplishment is family. I think there's a theme here.
Well, you know, and it's actually not, they're all different families, so the theme is not the same family.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we're not all proud of Michelle's family.
No, no.
Yeah. And tell us about your family.
So we're a blended family. I married my husband. I have two older stepsons, and my oldest is an attorney, and my middle child is going to medical school, and I joke that my youngest will become an artist. He's nine, so.
He's nine?
And I'm surrounded, outnumbered by boys.
So they're all boys?
All boys.
His, ours, and my bonus kids.
Yes.
Party is three altogether? And somehow you've made it all work?
Yep, and I have a grandbaby, that's three, and one on the way, so.
Wow.
And they're both going to be boys.
Someone do you want to rent a girl, or maybe someone will rent that girl? Thank you. What is your highest native gift?
I think that I strive to be fair and I treat others the way I seek to be treated.
So it's a fundamental sense of fairness. That is your perspective, and it is your native gift. So it is effortless, you are excellent, and when you get to express that gift, you're reminded at the end of that day that, why you're born. Okay, beautiful. And what would you like to earn on your claim for your epitaph?
In the great words of Mahatma Gandhi, I would wish to put, be the change you wish to see in the world. to see in the world.
So how about, let's claim it. Was the change, can we claim it?
Yeah.
Good. So she lived it, right?
Mm-hmm.
Was the change she wanted in the world? Okay.
Or in Las Vegas.
And Las Vegas. Well, Las Vegas would be part of the world.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, like the epicenter. Right, thank you. Who would like to go next? Go. Oh. Do you, we'll come back to you.
Pardon me?
Sorry, no, we're just.
Is it me?
I am ready. What are you proudest of in your entire life?
The fact that, family, but I've been married for 25 years, my wife still likes me.
That is great.
That I raise, that we're raising two strong and confident young ladies. It's vitally important.
Councilwoman Diaz may want to blow them.
Yeah.
If you're game, it's up for that.
Yeah, I also had a female dog who passed, but we, I was surrounded by all females. But I still am. It's all good. Wouldn't change it.
Yeah, I can feel your pride, so thank you for that. What is your highest native gift?
I think I'm welcoming to all. I guess, like a good, good vibe for all walks of people. Very welcoming, I'd like to think.
Can I, just play with that for a minute? Welcoming, just that, in terms of how you show up, is it about equal curiosity about all people? Like, is that?
No.
So one way shows up.
I wouldn't say equal curiosity, but I think that, you know, the ability to, to deal with a, a multi-faceted of people, right? So you've got, just because you have a lot of money doesn't mean that you shouldn't have, have, have the ability to say hello, or access, or answer questions. And if you have no money, if you've, if you, no matter where you live, if you live, if you've got a trailer, if you've got a house to ridges, it shouldn't make a difference that.
So is your native gift your ability to relationship with people?
I have the ability to go to the, to the White House, all the lounge.
Yeah. So you can build relationships?
Well, I don't know if it's relationships, but I think it, you know, everybody doesn't have the ability to, 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 to change like that, right? Some, a lot of times, people who, who haven't had access to a lot of things, I've been blessed to have access to a lot of things, which is, I think, makes you a, a well-rounded person. I think that's it, very well-rounded.
Good. So again, just to do the reality check, it is effortless?
Well.
I am excellent?
See, yeah, when you, when you said that, I kind of, it's kind of a, a misnomer. I don't think anything is effortless. I don't know what that means by effortless.
Natural.
Well, natural, but, yeah, I guess, right?
Well, for example?
I don't, I don't, you don't necessarily say I'm going into a room that's got X, and, you know, when I walk, when you go into a room with my peers, or you go into a room with, you know, my crazy uncle. You walk in, and it's, and you just, you're just who you are. I think if you caught me on a Tuesday, if you caught me on a Saturday, I can only be me. And this is it.
Okay, well-rounded, can I?
I guess that is effortless, that I can only be me.
Yeah, that's, so a very tangible example, because it's sometimes easier to have a tangible example. Every virtuoso pianist has a native gift, right? Now, it is effortless, because they can't, they were born to do it. And so that's the part that's effortless, combined with a ton of work, right?
Yeah.
To evolve the gift to its highest level. So this is not about, oh, I never exert, that's not the same thing as a native gift.
Yeah.
There are certain things that we're each born to do.
Yeah, I think a lot of us are here as elected and public servants, in some way, shape, or form, we are born to do what we do. We've been drawn to this, you know, God has a plan for all of us, and we are walking down that path. And, and so we have, we have recognized that in some way, shape, or form, and are following the path that God has for all of us. Whether we believe in God or not, it is a path that is predestined for us, and we're walking down that path.
You're not a born leader.
Well, a born leader, yeah. I follow my wife, but I, everybody else?
A born leader who married really well.
Yeah.
And what, what are you going to claim on your epitaph?
I think I'm man of action, instead of a person that's sort of talked about it, I did about it.
Oh, wow, that's great. Man of action, he did about it. Thank you, thank you. Councilman Condis, you want to go next? You raised your hand before.
You betcha. So on most proud, it would definitely be being a dad. I think the adult relationships are easier, parenting is the hardest thing I've ever had to do in my entire life, and nothing compares to it, not even close. So I would be most proud if my children don't end up in prison. That will be, that will be what I'm most proud of.
We're rooting for you. We're rooting for you. You know what, and even if they do, you just go with your invigilating hours every time you can. That's how it shows up. What is your highest native gift?
And you can probably help me with the language of this one. We've spent a lot of time with a mutual friend, Gar Jamison. It's that, that strategic ability to plant seeds, and I've done that in multiple times and multiple places, and things have flourished because I planted a seed. The implementation's not the strength, it's not the follow-through, it's starting it out and helping it to succeed.
So you all know him, so help him.
I would, with him, I would say subliminal greatness. He shares subliminal greatness with folks.
Great ideas.
Subliminal is a good word, but if you're on the other side, it's not great, it's awful. So it depends on which side you're on.
Anyone else want to help him?
Right.
By observing his gift?
Great ideas that he implements.
I think he's pragmatic in his approach. Very pragmatic, very straightforward, very logical in his reasoning.
Well thought out.
So if I said that he's got a native gift around finding the simplicity amidst the complexity, would that resonate with your experience with him?
He has a way about him that's very loving, right? But yet articulate.
Yeah. So I'm just going to start capturing it in, there isn't one phrase, clear thinking. Did you say that?
Well, he thinks a lot, I don't know if it's clear or.
Yeah. Bordering on overthinking, yeah. You are strategic. That was one word that came up, for sure, right?
Vision. Great ideas, vision.
He has a vision.
Will you accept that, vision? Starting to feel like you?
I don't think it's enough.
Okay, keep going.
His gift, when he's with you, and he wants to give you greatness, but he doesn't want you to know he's giving you greatness, is quite subliminal. I don't know how he does that.
Do you want to call it subtle?
I also don't like people talking about me at all. I'm very.
I know, I know.
Subtle yet direct?
So now I'm getting uncomfortable.
Subtle, yeah. Will you accept subtle yet direct?
I'll, I'll take it all.
Okay. Just to get, just to get beyond this.
Moving on.
Okay.
We loved.
Whoops, subtle yet direct. Do we know what this means now?
I know who I am, yeah.
And this describes the man you all work with. Okay. Strategic, with vision, subtle yet direct. And the seed planter, you said that, so I'm going to put that down here. To plant the seeds. Okay. What are you going to claim? And then we're almost done.
I am going to follow suit with Councilwoman Seema and make the world a better place. That's the phrase I ask everybody who's coming in that wants something from me, I say, how are you going to make this world better with that? So that's my, what I wanted to be known for.
So I'm going to claim it for you. Made the world a better place. Great. Take a deep breath, you are now done.
Thank you. You're welcome.
And, go Mayor.
What are you proudest of in your entire life?
I'll go last.
Oops.
I'll go next. Mayor has to go last.
What are you proudest of in your entire life, sir?
My parents. They came here from Cyprus with absolutely nothing, and lived the American dream. Everything came from them, so very proud of them.
And were you a little boy? Or were you born here?
I was born here.
So they made the trip?
Yeah, they came here, no money, no education, didn't know each other, got married and everything, just the American dream came from that. So if it wasn't for them, I wouldn't be here, so.
Wow, so we show your pride. We actually share your pride. I feel and proud for you. What is your highest, strongest, most brilliant native gift?
You know, I think it's from, I probably developed it from being a police officer or a captain, or on the board of regents, or on the city council. It's, it's basically, I do not make decisions unless I've listened to everybody. So I really take the time, because when it comes to, when you're making a decision in law enforcement, or when you're making a decision in public policy, it's a big deal. So I just always take the time to listen to everybody, study it, investigate it, and then I make a decision. I think I've, I've gotten pretty good at doing that.
So if I captured it by saying, listen slash hears, different to listen and hear, all perspectives, and then combined that with thoughtful?
And then making a decision, yeah.
Thoughtful decision-making. That feels right? So the thing about our native gifts is that this was the same behavior that was true of us when we were five, because we're only born once, given native gifts once. So it's what we're born into. Every experience that we have becomes like a stone on which we can sharpen that gift, right? We learn about how that gift is going to honor the world, and we get better and better at using it. So the chances are, you were this guy at age five, right? On the playground, you were like, wait, before you all start fighting, let's listen to each other, let's consider.
And then you get in a fight.
What's that?
Then you get into the fight.
And then you get into the fight. Well, you were five, so yeah.
You gotta, you gotta check everything out before you get into the fight.
So one, just the, as, it is surprising to me that the question, name and claim your native gifts, is a difficult one for all of us to answer. And yet if I said, please tell me the ways in which you suck, we would have no trouble, right? We're like, would you like that list alphabetically? Can I give you that list based on order of magnitude? We refine that list, the ways in which we fall short, the ways in which we're not quite good enough.
But I have to say that, it's, I don't know about everybody else, but, you know, it's, it's tough to go through an exercise like this in a very public meeting.
Sure does.
Right? I'm sure maybe people watching on TV, we've got the cameras, we've got everybody's recording everything, and you're asking those to, you know, say what your attributes are, what you think, in a, in a very public meeting. I've never been in a setting like this where I've had a, questions asked like this.
Yeah.
Welcome to city council?
Yeah, I mean, normally if you're, if you're in a training session or something like that, and everybody puts their knees together, looks each other in the eyes, and you start doing some kumbaya, but that's not public.
Right, and so the courage.
This is a very interesting.
The notion of courage, here's been my experiences, when I witness courage, what I'm actually seeing is a person who is willing to trust me with terrifying vulnerability.
But as elected officials, there's living more than that.
I know.
Right.
Well, and it's.
And things are, I'm just saying, I don't know what the, the outcome of the exercise is going to be, but as, as elected officials, it makes it, it's vivid more than just courage.
Vulnerable. We're very vulnerable.
Well, and vulnerability.
So I think you should, I don't know if you take that into consideration, not the right, right or wrong, but as elected, it's a much different ballgame than just asking people who work at a company, what you think is your biggest strength.
So you're absolutely right, and however, if we give ourselves permission, this is arguably one of the most important leadership teams any of you will ever participate on. And so, yes, the political considerations are significant, because that's what brings you to the seat, and the leadership opportunity is so much bigger than the political consideration. And so at some point, it is okay to grant permission. Like, I've done this with other elected officials. It is not easy, which is why people don't do it. It is not easy to say, I am real, and I am authentic, and I am not perfect. Right? Because politically, there's no upside to saying that. But I got to tell you, think about the people that you will follow anywhere. They're not the people who are the best put together, they're the people who are the most authentic. And so what is leadership about, right? And so we can simply declare conditions that say, hey, around this squad, this team, we are seven people brought together in some inexplicable act of destiny, that in this moment, we are responsible collectively for defining the future of this community. So that is a big deal, and I'm willing then to trust you, and listen to you, and bring all of our native gifts to the table, because the opportunity compels me to want to do it. And it is, the whole public meeting thing is wackadoodle. It's, I mean, that's not a legal term, so I'm not giving a legal interpretation, but it, it really makes it so much more difficult, right? You've worked hard, you get here, you may or may not know anyone around the table, and now boom, you're subject to open meeting, as we're supposed to be imagining what the future is going to look like. Those are conversations that only can happen if we have trust, willing to be a little bit vulnerable, willing to go there together. And the experience that I've had is, when elected leaders are willing to do it, you become so compelling to citizens that are looking and craving that leadership. So that's the argument I would make.
Okay.
What are you going to lay claim to on your, as part of your epitaph for your, or your tombstone? He's giggling.
Well, I'll be dead, so I don't know who's going to put it on there.
Well, you'll have earned it.
Somebody else will probably decide.
We're going to do that, we'll do that.
I, I guess it's the same theme as, as some other people. Whatever I can influence, I just want to make it better.
So he made.
My sphere of influence, I mean, it's, I'm, I'm not going to make the world a better place, but whatever I have control over, or influence over, I just try to make it a little bit better.
So you made things better.
I disagree. I've worked with you for a long time, and we look back on a lot of places that you literally have implemented. Truthfully. We're at the backs of the pack.
Thanks. So, thank you. Mayor, you want to bring us home?
The only thing I want to add is, I think these are a remarkable group of people with whom I have had the good opportunity and the fun to work with over these past couple of years, or six months since, or seven months since they've been elected. And the essence of who they are, what's missing is the real truth about their hearts and why they want to do it. And I find it, this is not my ballgame, trust me. I'm, I live with the biggest ego next to Donald Trump in the whole world. We have very high doors, very wide, so he can get in every day of his life. I love him to death, he's been my partner, he, I am, much like Councilman Anthony here, I am, much like Councilman Anthony here, very much connected to my parents, even though they're not here. They are who I am, we never, I never would have done anything untoward. I wouldn't use any dirty language, because I never wanted to embarrass them. I always thought first of, how can I make them proud? And I think everything in my whole life's been guided by that. And then to find someone who's got the greatest sense of humor, pushes the envelope every day, but a heart of gold, the same sense of integrity and honesty about everything that he does in life. And we view life as one, which means, we're put on this earth, we both believe, whether it's for faith or whatever, to try to be participatory, make life better. He is the me, I, my, I am the we, our, us in our household. And it's been a remarkable journey, as we age now, both of us, learned a heck of a lot. Know what's important is to be truthful, to make good choices, teach others to make good choices, and get rid of the ego. You know, it's been so much all my life, thinking about, again, how do I make my parents proud, and continuing to live under that ageist. And I tell you, these people who are your council members, and my colleagues, are a remarkable group of people, each with their own stories, their own agenda, but learning and changing and understanding, there's a lot of history in this community. Been here since 1964, coming in with $87. And so I don't want to give you, I think you have enough from these people. It's not about me, it's about us as a group, it's about all of us with different heartbeats, and different hands, and different everything. We're each unique, and my greatest joy is working for the people here, because I love Las Vegas. And the one thing I would tell you I am most proud of, as you know, we have four adopted children, eight different genetic pools of adults created those four children, which we took home at three days of age. And they are the most remarkable human beings. Washed their clothes in the same detergents, and they smell differently. The oldest one basically saved my life in cancer with, he's an MD/PhD, born and raised, obviously here, fully public school educated, remarkable, getting referrals from the world, because he specializes in prostate cancer. That's our oldest son. And the next one's a very, very aggressive criminal defense attorney, very different. Very focused on, also, public school educated. All four children hating Las Vegas, will never come back, all four are here. And loving life, and doing something for others. The third one's an attorney as well, but a judge. And then our daughter, who did undergraduate and graduate school at Stanford, took a second masters at the University of Phoenix, to get into the field that she loves, which is family therapy, and she works in the burn unit and trauma one, working with people who really are really at a very tough time in life. And nobody could have, just to hug each one of them is the most important thing for me. And so, nothing written down here, it's just, it's such a good time to live in this community, and everything Jeremy spoke to, to understand the people who are part of our community, and individually their needs, and then to be totally honest. And it's not about me, and it's not about anything other but than our community, to make it as strong and as pliable for everybody. And so I just, I don't put anything up, really, I mean, I find it offensive that it's about me, it's not about me. It is about us, and we are building, there is no better place to be than in the city of Las Vegas, and with our team of people. It's not, we care about the county, and we care about the state, but our area is the city. And we are doing a great job to make it as strong and as good as it can be. And so I took that license from you, Punam, I hope you don't mind. I just, no, that's not me, I can't do that.
So here's what I did.
I'm gonna be cremated anyway, so forget the epitaph on a stone. Is that maudlin, sorry?
I think there's a lot of words, I mean, you've been claiming them. We heard tremendous pride, I felt it, all around family, the parents, the mate, the next gen, and then all of those that you mom, that you serve as a mom to, in the entire city of Las Vegas. So that's one. Native gift, let me observe, what I saw was, and you used the words, in our house, I am we, ours, us. And that, if I observed that as a native gift, would you claim it?
Yeah, I mean, it's who I have grown to be all these years.
Yeah, and I think you were born that way, would be my observation. And in every experience you've had, every role that you've occupied, it gives you another opportunity to learn more about how to express that, to make the world a better place, right? And you've been doing that, including in this moment right here. What would you like on your, as part of the epitaph?
There's not gonna be one. We're a grain of sand, and we are in a continuum of life on this planet. And do you remember somebody who was born in 1600 or 1400? That's been our predecessors, and on whose shoulders we're here? So, nothing, really nothing, thank you.
I'm gonna honor that, and we will write it ourselves, because you give us a lot to work with. Okay. I acknowledge that was uncomfortable, I want to honor that you chose to stay in it, because it's easy to cut and run, but it doesn't help the relationship, right? And so when we stay in it, even when it's a little bit awkward, we strengthen it. And the fact that you've shared, as publicly as you've chosen to share, sends a powerful permission to all of us. Because at the end of the day, we're all human beings doing the best we can. We're a wonderful collection of hopes, and joys, and dreams, and aspirations, and fears, and anxieties, and traumas. Like that's sort of, we all have stories that are unbelievable. And the thing that sets you all apart is that in this moment, in this journey, in this community, the seven of you are together. Could be any of us, it is not, it is the seven of you, right? Which is the, well, this one's not sticky back. Doesn't have the sticky back. Can I give it to you? Hand it to Dina, Dina's gonna solve it, Dina's got that solved. Okay, think now about 2030, or 2050, sorry. Now, when we look that far in the future, we're not gonna see it with precision, but look over the bow of the ship, and what would you like to be true about the city of Las Vegas in 2050, that's one way to think about it, what would I like to be true? In 2050, another way to look at it is, what seeds that I'm willing to plant now, do I want to see harvested by 2050? It's another way to look at it, what seeds do I want to plant today that have harvest? And what will the harvest look like in 2050? A third way to look at it is, what promise do I want to deliver to this community in 2050? Doesn't matter how you look at it, I just want you to contemplate this community in 2050, and describe it.
I would like to add in that, that we, based on the results of that survey, that we will work to make each today, preparing for tomorrow, as we get to our plans for 2050, I thought that was so telling to hear, because that's what we all live, every day we live today, we hope to live tomorrow. And we want tomorrow equal to or better than today, equal to or better than. And so as we build for, I don't know anybody's age in here, but that's a ways off.
It's a long ways off.
That's 30 years off, so add 30 years to your age. To get there, I want to make sure that we're caring for our people. All, all, somebody's gonna be 80, who's 80?
In 30 years?
Yeah.
I'm gonna be 50 this summer, I'm gonna be 80.
Yep.
You're gonna be old, welcome to the world.
80, I'm gonna be 60.
Okay, but the reality is that we listen to that, because all these people, all of us, are here today, and we want to make sure tomorrow's equal today, and don't plan to jump to get to 2050, and leaving us with the rotted roads or whatever, so that we take this carefully to that.
So, yes, absolutely, that was a powerful, I too cut that in the presentation.
Yes, huge.
This is about imagining 2050, right? Without the, nothing in between, yet, right? So, don't need to worry about whether we're gonna forget today, or forget that there's lots to be done between now and 2050, all of that is real and true. Right now, the curiosity is to you as seven leaders, who are together in this moment, what is your collective vision for this city in 2050?
So not our particular words you're saying.
No, not our, you are one-seventh of the stewards of this entire community, so.
Can we make a, could I ask a question?
Yeah.
Is Mike Sherwood in this room?
Yes.
Of course.
Where are you? I'm very nervous, because I see planes with no pilots. I mean, when we're looking at what you're gonna be doing to us, how do we include that, or do we eliminate it? Except to say, because we don't know what tomorrow's gonna hold in technology. What do we do, do we eliminate, I mean, how can you envision what's in technology?
It's pie in the sky visioning, we don't have answers to any of those other questions.
Are you talking more about humanity?
For the community, you are one-seventh of a leadership team, stewarding this entire community, or the city, to a future.
But based on Jeremy's.
That's one of the inputs, right? You've got tons of inputs, including every second of your life experience, bring it all, right?
Punam, I would want to point out that I would hope by 2050, we have a stronger sense of community.
Stronger sense of community, okay. So we have a strong sense of community, that will be true, okay?
And Punam, I would kind of echo the sentiment that Mr. Aguero talked about of, within Southern Nevada, right now, as we know it, we have pockets of excellence. There's pockets of excellence in education, pockets of excellence in healthcare. My aspiration would be that in 2050, we're not pockets of excellence, we're excellent. And everybody in our community has access to housing, and transportation, and healthcare, and education. And those things are accessible to every second of our community.
So excellence in every sector, right?
And accessible for everyone, not pockets.
Right. In every sector. And accessible to everyone, that's awesome.
So I have one word, like our mayor, I have to tell you, when I first started this vision, I saw, you know, building up in the city and skyscrapers, and attached to those skyscrapers were exterior, kind of like heliports, but not helicopters, because the rotors are too big, but the little flying cars, so we'll just fly our car in our little port, and then go in. So all of our nice skyscrapers, like the Jetsons, exactly like the Jetsons, right?
That's what I was talking, was Jetsons.
But in the next 30 years, we really, in my opinion, as a city leader, we really have to exemplify tolerance for all. So, you know, when we look at everything, from religion, to race, to creed, to politics, the tolerance for all is really, is really something. I saw something yesterday, which was, which was, you know, not my favorite to see, some folks behaving, and literally being zero tolerance with each other. And there's room for everyone's thought process, and, you know, different things. We had a group of Jesus people walking around with, you know, "Do this, or you're gonna go to hell." And then we had a group of very flamboyant LGBT, stopping the Jesus people, doing like a strip dance, masturbating with a cross, you know. And so someone looked at me and said, "Well, what would you do?" And I said, "I would, if I were the Jesus people, walk around the artist people, and just continue, like there's space for all of us." Do you understand what I mean?
Yeah.
Like, if you want to do that, great, don't block another from doing his thing, vice versa, whether you, whatever side of the coin you're on. But the tolerance level that I saw was sad, because, you know, one of the groups was giving the other group like the middle finger, and really provoking them, and the other group just stood there and just took it. And there's absolutely no reason for it, like we should be tolerant to everyone.
So looking at here, right, so declaration around this sense of community, would it be reasonable to say that one dimension of that community's spirit would be around tolerance? And inclusion, is that?
Yeah, you know, but it's not even so much a strong sense of community, because I wouldn't force upon the Jesus people to be part of, you know, things that they don't want to be part of, right? I don't want to force the other group to be part of a religious group that they're not, that they don't want to be part of. I just want mutual tolerance and respect for all, whatever it is, whatever that may be. So I don't think forcing or creating a strong sense of community for these two, it's just really tolerance for each group, like there's space for your Jesus stuff, and there's space for your dancing stuff, like.
So if I capture it here, is it here? Spirit of tolerance and respect for all is gonna be absolutely true in 2050?
Yeah.
Thank you. What else?
I missed what we were.
Oh, sorry, in 2050, what will be true?
What will be true?
What will be true?
Will be true, what I have to say encompasses excellence in every sector, because I would love to see, long before 2050, that we have tackled mental illness in this city, along with having a great children's hospital, and different medical, that we don't have to send our children out of the state. So, kind of encompasses sector inaccessible, but, yeah, okay.
Is it encompassed, or should we, you want to declare healthcare or something?
Declare healthcare, yeah.
Okay. And what do you want to declare about it?
That we will have facilities to care for our mentally ill, and have facilities for our children, where we don't have to send them out of state.
Okay, so we'll have facilities that we do not have now. In 2030, there will be healthcare facilities in Las Vegas, in the city of Las Vegas. Did I capture it?
Yes.
Yes.
So by 2050, we have mitigated homelessness by 90%. Our healthcare has gone from being 48th, 49th ranked in the country, to a top 20 healthcare city and community.
Great.
That our education has gone from 48th to 49th ranked, to a top 10 healthcare facility, I mean, excuse me, education city. That the city has gone from 43 million annual visitors to 65 million annual visitors.
Say that again.
That our visitors have gone from 42, 43 million visitors, to upwards of 65 million visitors a year. That the historic West Side has been redeveloped, and is a thriving community, that we know it to be. And that we are considered a city of excellence.
In the nation, in the state, in the region, in the world?
All over the world.
Let's do it, if you're gonna say it, say it.
People come to our city to find out, how do, how do, how do we duplicate what they're doing?
Okay.
Safety in parks, I mean, safety is going down, I mean, excuse me, crime is going down?
Okay, let me see if I got it all, because that was a lot of cool stuff. Healthcare, you had a metric for healthcare that I didn't catch.
I said that healthcare, we go from being ranked, I'll say from the lower tier to the upper tier, so from.
So top tier, okay.
Top tier.
And then that will come from seeing that just extends this, right? Healthcare facilities, but he's saying, like, let's, if we're gonna declare it, let's declare it, we're doing top tier, that's the declaration.
Yeah, I mean, that goes back into research, it goes back to number of physicians per population, nurses per population, the medical school is built out.
There's a lot to do, so don't worry about the, don't worry about this stuff to do, but we first got it.
Our graduate medical education is, we're putting out more and more of our residents staying within the city of Las Vegas, and contributing back to our community.
Okay. Homelessness, down by 90%, now down, wait, it would be less than 90%, right?
No, it'll be mitigated by 90%.
Oh, mitigated by, okay, so we're like driving it to zero, right? Correct, so we're driving to zero.
We're driving to zero.
Got it. In education, we're top 10.
We are top 10.
In the country.
Yeah, and that's K through 16.
Ah, okay.
Pre-K.
Pre-K through 16, yes.
Okay, great.
Pre-K through 16, you're absolutely right.
Through 16, visitors, we're at 65 million, greater than 65 million?
Well, yeah, we're 40 now, so we're gonna keep growing. I think Orlando's at 60, 65, so we gotta beat down, we gotta beat, you know, we gotta, we gotta keep on bringing people to the, to the community.
We're, we have a thriving West Side.
Yes.
Okay, crime is.
Crime is down.
Flummeling really low.
Yeah, we've got some of the most unique and innovative park systems, trail systems. Our climate is, not climate as in heat mitigation, but climate as in, we have found ways to conserve water, hence we're the Water District, that we have found ways to continue our parks, our trail systems, our national parks. our parks, our trail systems, our national parks. Lake Beat is on the rise again.
Okay, Creer, I don't know how we make that happen.
Yeah, well, they got 30 years.
And how about transportation?
Yeah, transportation's a big one. Yeah, you know, you have to, in order to manage, if we're going to go from 2 million residents in the area to, in 30 years, 2 and 1/2 million, Mayor, go, what's a good number? 3 million, 4 million? 3 million, 3 million.
So here's what I'm hearing. This is a bold aspiration, so I just want to check in to make sure it is absolutely authentically true for all seven of you. Because this is the, this is the thing, right? That we need to hear clarity from leaders on. There is not an aspiration that says, let's go middle of the pack is the aspiration for 2050. I did not hear that from any of you, right? I didn't hear, our journey together as a group of seven making decisions today is like a lazy river ride. That is not what I heard. What I'm hearing is throw down. We are going to throw down. We're going to declare as an aspiration, right? That in 2050, the seven of us, in the moment that we were called together to be stewards of this city, we said, we're going to be a premier city globally. And that's going to be true in every sector of everything we do, right? I mean, is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, I want to add something if I can.
Please.
I want us to be the envy of every city in the nation, that we are the most business friendly.
Okay. So, you know that this is going to be really inappropriate, but I'm going to say it, and I know we're in a public meeting, but I think you'll all relate. Do you remember the movie When Harry Met Sally?
Yes.
Remember that one scene in the restaurant?
Yes.
Yeah, you want to be the table that the entire world looks at and says, I'll have what they're having. Is that right?
Yes. I'm glad you went there.
I did go there. I did go there. I'm not running, so I can say things like that. Most business friendly, okay. So we can, so regardless of the dimensions, right? What you've said, and I just want to play it back to make sure that I'm hearing it, because if I'm hearing it, then so are the people behind me, and then by extension, the tens of thousands behind them, right? The aspiration for 20, the vision that seems to be shared and a consensus among the seven of you is that we will be top tier in picks a measure.
I think we need to add one more thing, too.
Please.
Is that we have a very diversified business and robust business economy. And if you, we have multiple industries.
Okay. So business friendly, we have here.
Well, business friendly is one thing, but I think that, you know, yeah, you could have a lot of businesses, but...
Diversified economy.
Not, not a lot of industry.
Yeah. So diversified economic base?
Yes.
Captures it, okay. Okay. So can you read that?
Can I just make an observation?
Please.
Because I, I think everything on there is awesome and amazing. And it's, I always come back to, my time working at the city is talking about what the city can control and what the city can't control. And I think everything on that list are things that the city can influence. And I think our ability and our question of influence is, is the heart of the argument. And I believe this council and this city can influence a whole lot of those things and how we leverage influence within our, within our city, our community, our state is, is the question, is how we're able to leverage influence on healthcare, leverage influence on education. We've practiced on a lot of those things, and I see by 2050, practice makes perfect. We get it, we get it really well, how we influence those sectors.
Sure. Great reminder. Anything else you want to see up here?
One thing that I was troubled by was that when people took the survey, place to raise children was one of the thumbs down we got as a city. And I definitely want to see that this is a place where you do want to raise your child and you want to bring them. So I want to change that narrative and I want to make sure that we're doing everything we can to, to make people feel safe, comfortable, and that we are offering the best for our kids.
So a place for families. Now, do you want to declare best place for families? Top tier.
Yeah.
You're not doing mediocre, like, who one of you have said, go in the middle of the pack.
It has to go with that list.
That's right.
Yeah.
Okay. So number one, go buy or go home?
Yep.
So what you're saying, okay.
Yep.
For families.
Especially because if you look at all of us, we all have so much pride in our family that we want to make sure that that resonates as well.
Nice crosswalk, yes, exactly. Anything else you want to see up here? Don't want to keep going. Do you need a break for a few minutes? Mayor can keep going, but Councilman Cuninchen cannot, so let's, but why don't we take 10? And then come back. Do we need to adjourn or... So it is 9:57 right now? Mayor, it's 9:57, what time you want to bring us back?
Okay, we have to formally... Formally, we have to take a 10-minute recess.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we're back at 10:10.
Good way.
Okay. So this we can move. Yeah.
You should add an increased neighborhood quality of life.
Let's do it. Oh, sorry about that. I realized that you got it back like 30 seconds later, so I'm like, I always, no, you have like 42 pounds of paper.
I want to highlight.
You could have, I did, when I started, you may have noticed.
How did you get all those different times that I didn't know about? Oh, can I have something else? No, but if you know, it's solid. Perhaps I'm where you're. Okay, look at this tree in April. What a tree. That's a pretty. How did you get all those different times that I didn't know about? Mike Johnson.
I fired you three times. I want them to buy them.
I don't know what I don't know.
All Roger and I by the building. Yeah, no, but he spoke about his chair in your conference.
Some stuff going on.
So that's when I said, so where's Mike? If he doesn't get here, he's fired. They laugh. It's all.
No, it's got to be.
Fired like three times last night.
Well, now we got to find our leader.
We haven't seen Poonam.
She's still on break.
She's still on break, waiting for us to all get settled. So phones back off if you wouldn't mind, please, as we build a new world and we can have a conversation with Mike Sherwood at this point while we're waiting for Poonam. So tell us in 2050, or tell us where we're going to be next year with technology. What things do you see coming in the future that we have to pay for? That's our biggest expense. Mr. Adams, what is our budget for technology in 2050, please?
I think that's a Michael Sherwood question.
The entire budget will probably be consumed by technology.
That is true. No, seriously, while we're waiting for Poonam to come back, could you tell us really, where could we possibly dream that this city might be in a leadership role by 2050 in technology? Go as high out there as you can.
Good morning, Mayor, council members. Michael Sherwood, Director of Information Technology. I would say what you've talked about already this morning are the building blocks. Education, the ability to train people for the things that are coming. I think you already have visions in Las Vegas of what's actually available in technology. So there's automated bartenders at Planet Hollywood. You use an iPad-type device and you can order drinks. You'll see.
Does a drink get delivered by a robot?
Not yet, not yet. So you go up to the bar and you just pull it off of a countertop and it just pours it for you. I think the biggest things that I look at from a technology perspective, go back to what you can do today as leaders, which is education, workforce development, promoting Las Vegas as a business-friendly community and city. As technology evolves, the ability for us as a community to actually have the knowledge to repair these systems, design them, help engage them, becomes extremely important. I think you'll see a lot of, if you're looking at pie in the sky, what could happen? The George Jetson car that was mentioned, I'm not sure where or who mentioned it, but that's a true possibility. That's probably sooner rather than later. I think sustainability of your home and things that we can do as a community already. And we have great partnerships with world countries around the world, but water conservation, obviously very important here, water technology, having your house that's completely sustainable, extremely important. So solar, water conservation, the ability to take your solid waste from your home and re-energize, whether it be into fertilizers or other types of means, those types of things will be there. But all of it centers around having a strong education base and a strong leadership base from government to help ensure that we're able to, as new technologies come out, embrace them, look at them, decide what's good for our community and what may not be good for the community. But I think the best way to look at technology is look at George Jetson. And it was brought up again today. A lot of those things are already either here or coming. You have food machines that process food and give it to you. You'll have cars that are able to maneuver in different ways. You will have, work will change. The way that we work today is already changing. More and more people work from home or work with laptops remotely. We're more connected. But I think the things that you had around being, one thing that will be, it's not a technology necessarily issue, but I think it's an issue for cities in general, is how do you bring and build society to have connectivity? How do you talk in person-to-person versus behind a screen and behind a phone or some other mobile device? So it's the things that you bring as a unifying force as government. Technology will come, technology will go. The main things that communities need and citizens want, safety, recreation, leadership and thought processes, so they're our jobs and they're our community, those are the most important components.
And if, one last thing, and I'm sorry, put in my writing. If you took Gary Ameling's CFO's pie of dollars to divide them up, we know almost in every pie in every business, the lion's share of the funds go into the employee. As we move into a technological world, when you look at a pie of 100%, what amount will be that portion of the budget?
The employee ratio as we go forward will most likely dip down a little bit. So I would say probably your labor, if it was 80% today, might dip down to probably maybe the 50s, maybe the 60 range. But the amount of skills that you will need as that employee base will rise.
Okay, thank you. So just wanting to prepare Gary in his 30 years coming, that he has to find the money for you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
He is expensive here.
Oh, my God, we have so much going towards it. Sorry, Poonam, it was just, we were just moving along and I had to find out about the budget.
Thank you. I am trying to synthesize onto a single page so that you've got it for reference through the next section, what your declaration was. So here's, as I processed it, what I heard, but I need to check it because it's your reality, right? Las Vegas 2050, essentially what you're saying is we will be this world's number one community.
Yes.
Right?
Saucy, tolerant.
All of it, right? So from whether, so it's sort of top-tier aspirations, safety, healthcare, business climate, visitors, visitation, recreation, leisure, transportation, education, in all sectors, right?
And one thing that was mentioned a lot in the survey that I don't think we captured and I think it's important to maintain is the affordability.
Affordability.
Just affordable, to continue to be affordable to live in our city.
Affordable, and I'm going to add accessible because that came up as well. And so that's all of the, so the dimensions on which we're going to be able to legitimately claim top-tier, you're declaring. And then there's also a set of themes around sense of community, family-friendly, pride, inclusion, tolerance, that whole set of themes, right? I'm going to call those the less tangible, that's super important. So that's pretty audacious. Good for you. Good for you. Okay. Who has ever cleaned a closet that was really messy or embarked on that spring cleaning of the garage or even had the guts to go take on the drawer that we all have in our kitchen that's got all the stuff in it? You've all had that experience, right? Think back to that experience. I've made a choice, I'm going to tackle the garage, the closet, or that drawer in my kitchen. And when I first, the first few moments of that process, I'm like, what did I just do? Because part of that is you got to unload and take out everything. So in the short term, you've got a bigger mess than you had when you started. And if we plow through that phase, we get to a clean garage, clean closet, or clean drawer. So this process can sometimes be a little like that. So as we go to the next step, which is now contemplating the, what are the things that we need to do in the next five years that will allow us to maintain a glide path to your vision for 2050? It may feel a little like that in-between stage in that massive cleanup project, so I would just say to you, just trust it, stay with it, and we'll get the closet clean. So here's the next question. So this is the vision. I don't mean a vision statement, but it is meant to reflect a shared depiction of your collective vision. So I'm going to ask you each, if this is true for you, then just tell us all by saying yes.
Where's tolerance? Oh, it's there, it's there. I'm blind.
Yeah, so I don't want it wordsmithed because I've just been catching words. It's to make sure that conceptually I am reflecting your truth, right?
Where's culture and art?
Didn't have it, but we're going to put it up.
Education's not on there either.
Education is on here, so.
It is on there?
Yeah, yeah. Arts and culture.
You're blind, too.
Great neighborhoods.
That's on there, sense of.
I've got pride, so neighborhoods I got to add. And the key here is the aspiration is about being the number one in the world. That's the aspiration, right? And so we could enumerate many pages worth of the ways in which we will do that, but sort of the line that you've now given as the leadership vision is a really bold one. And that's a cool thing because that's what we look to leaders to do is tell us what you want, tell us what you're aiming for. So this is an aim high, right? So if this is reflective of your vision for this city in 2050, important, just tell us by saying yes, it is. I'm just going to ask you. Is it? It is.
Yeah, you know, when you say neighborhoods on there, I think it's important to stress all neighborhoods.
Good. I'm going to put that in.
Not just some neighborhoods.
Why not just my neighborhood?
All neighborhoods. Good, thank you. And is it reflective of your vision for us?
I don't see homelessness on there. You know, it ties into everything that's on there.
2050, there ain't going to be no homelessness.
Well, yeah, but I think you need to.
To call it out.
It has to be, it has to be a subject matter.
Good. It is now.
Do you have environment on there?
I do not. I do now?
All right.
Yes?
Yes.
Thank you. In a word?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Pretty much.
Looking for a yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
I would like to add, if we're consistent with the citizens' priorities for us, something around good governance, that we use our assets to the fullest abilities. Maximize assets.
Is that being financially?
Financially responsible and asset maximization is the words that Jeremy Aguero mentioned. And that was the priorities the citizens set for us.
So financially responsible, maximizing assets.
And then yes.
Thank you. I was going to wear a skirt today, I'm really glad I didn't. I probably shouldn't have said that out loud, but I can't help it.
You know, it is Vegas, the show is appreciated.
It is.
Just saying.
Not when you're the performer. Councilwoman Diaz.
Yes.
This is true, great. Thank you. So that's a big deal. Is this useful to you, Mr. Adams? Great. Because he's your conductor, he's got to make this music sing with an orchestra of 3,600 people. So getting a yes out of him is just as important to getting a yes out of all of you. And the reason that it's so important to get that kind of clarity is we've all been kids, right? If I saw any white space between the clarity shared by two parents, I'd find the run-room in the middle, right? And part of what is true is all of you are the boss to 3,600 people. And so anything you say, given the power of your position, anything you say feels like a complete directive. And so if there's even a degree separation in what you are saying, it makes it very difficult to then cascade that down through 20 departments, 3,600 employees, and hundreds of thousands of residents. So thank you for that, that's really important. So this is useful. Got it? Good. All right, so the next question is, now let's dump our drawer, right? If we're in the kitchen door, we're going to dump our drawer. So now the question becomes, towards that, and somewhere where we can see it readily, where can you see it? Do you want to put it up here? How about we put it up here? On there? So I want you to look at it because this is the vision, right, the aspiration, but that's a 2050, 34 years away. So that's the trajectory. Now the question becomes, what in the next three to five years must we do with excellence to get onto a glide path that feels aligned with our vision for 2050? Right, no. And at this point, it is not about picking the best ideas, it is about capturing all of the ideas. And then we'll go through a process to sift and sort so that you can decide the ones that are matter to you. So at this point, it's a brainstorming activity. What are all the potential answers to the question? What strategic priorities do we need to be excellent in implementing over the next three to five years in order to put us on a glide path to 2050?
So my question to you is, the challenge is, you know, there's no silver bullet to any of these.
Correct.
Right? I mean, this is, each, each one of those is going to take a lot of deep thought and a deep collaboration.
Correct.
In moving forward. So, you know, to sit, to say we're going to give you, to say I can give you one answer or something we need to do in order to make the safe is kind of tough, right? We have more cops on the street, we have the ratios from that are in place.
There isn't one, so, to be clear, there is no expectation that there's going to be one single action that we can take. It would be extraordinary if life were that simple, we know that simply to not be the case. The challenge is, yes, there's a litany of things that will need to be done with fidelity and excellence to get us to this, to legitimately incredibly lay claim to the number one community in the world along all of these dimensions is not an easy, like that ain't easy. And in the next five years, what are the few things that if we did with excellence would help us to get there?
I don't, I just find it not to be that simplistic.
It isn't.
To ask us now, just my personal opinion, is not as simplistic to say if we did these three things, then that's going to make us, 2050 going to be the city of excellence.
It isn't to suggest that at all, because that is, that would be.
I'm trying to understand, I mean, each, and I'm not trying to be difficult.
No, no, I know.
I just think that, you know, each one of those, each and every one of those bullet points takes extensive thought, research, collaboration amongst, not only City of Las Vegas, amongst jurisdictions, amongst our other, our peers.
Which is precisely why it is important to get to some clarity. Because it is not possible to do everything with excellence simultaneously. So let me just, let's start, just capture ideas. I hear the sensitivity, I'm hoping at the back end that we will have mitigated some of that, or you'll feel better as we go. Trust us?
Yeah, I trust you.
Are you looking for steps? Steps that we're going to do to get?
No. Strategic priorities. What are the priorities that if we could focus and get things done with excellence in the next three to five years, would put us on a glide path to 2050?
So, so, so let's say the courtyard is open and operating. Is that something that you're seeing?
Would that be useful to you? So if there was leadership direction that said.
That's moving forward.
It's a little bit, yeah, I was going to say, if, so taking that, but moving it to the right wavelength that we're looking for here, it's very tactical. So you could say.
Maybe give us an example.
Let me give you an example.
I would have been on the same page with you, I'm just trying to understand.
You could say, we, or one of the things that we could strive to be excellent at with focus in the next three to five years would be tackling homelessness.
Yeah.
You say that, that's the kind of clarity that your conductor needs because now he's going to turn to 20 department heads and say, come up with your best idea.
So these are the three things that we, top priorities?
Strategic priorities.
Okay. Now I got you. All right.
Sorry, I led you, like I can sometimes do that, I will lead you in a little famous circus trip.
I got a process in my brain many don't quite get.
You got, no, no, we got you, we got you. So, do you want to add that? So let me just ask you now, do you want to add homelessness?
For me?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, so, if you, well, yeah, if you're asking me, you know, I asked, I asked my staff and we sort of got together and, you know, what do we think are the sort of three top priorities of three things? And we have a list of things and, you know, one of them that always rose to the top for us in what we think is homelessness and housing.
So write it down.
And if you look at, you know, homelessness in, LA County has grown 16% in the last year. And they spent over $600 million on homelessness. They also got 21%, they got 21,000 people into homes and transitioned homes, yet it still went up. So it's not just one, putting a lot of money towards something. It's not just to, a lot of people who say that the only solution is for, is to provide housing, right? I think that's one, but LA's shown us that we've put 21,000 people into homes and homelessness has still grown by 16%. And so when I say homelessness, I mean a strategic, well-thought-out plan.
Yeah. We need leaders to tell us where to put our focus. You've got world-class staff that will bring back to you suggestions of how we do that.
Yeah, and I think homelessness ties into safety, quality of life.
Yeah, so, does anyone else want to?
Healthcare. It ties back to so many other factors.
Could I just add one thing?
Please.
It's much like watching the Democratic candidates talk about the issues of our country. And every human being that comes into the office of the mayor, I shouldn't say every, probably 99% is, I need this or I have this great idea, not what can I help the city with. They don't come in with buckets of money. What we all say as we're watching the debates is, where's the money? So as we come to the end of your list that you think we're in an appropriate spot, I would love to hear from the council how they think we're going to fund it. Because we could have the greatest ideas in the world, but when it comes to safety, unless it changes because of population and demographics, just the LV MPD, the county takes care of 60%, we take care of 40%, so no matter, and that's what I'm looking at, is what piece of the budget and what amount do we want to do it? And I can attest to everything that Councilman Creer has said because we are very good friends with Mayor Garcetti. And the issues with, they're, they're close to epidemic emergency issues. And so where, when you get your list of five, six, 10, how much of the budget are we able to allocate that will make a difference? I'm not even saying get us on the road to. So budgeting and how we can pay for it is critical to all of these things as they take priority.
Do you want to address how you look?
Well, Madam Mayor, I would just weigh in here by saying that when you get this done, when you said these three to six things are the most important things to us as city council, and then we drill down to the next several levels below those, a little bit more strategically and tactically, you're helping instruct us on priorities in the budget.
Okay.
Because then we're putting, when we put the budget together, it should be responsive to these priorities.
That's right.
So all things being equal, if you say homelessness is important and something else isn't as important, then when we're trying to. else isn't as important, then when we're trying to squeeze things into the budget, the homeless item would be included. Very instructive to the budget process.
Because in keeping with Councilman Creer's initial comments and inquiry, I see operations and maintenance needs a big chunk of money to do more when homeless won't come in. And we keep the homeless out there, and wherever they're moving, because we are concentrating in the city, I do recall the days with Councilman Coffin, who specifically asked, I want more marshals in the parks, and then you start these new classes of marshals. So is that what this is going to translate to?
Absolutely.
Because I agree with Councilman, this is so far-reaching, each one of these, and the costs are astronomical.
Yes.
And that will be something that he will bring back. So the point is, there are certain basic obligations that you all have, period. You don't get to choose, you know, they're just obligations that are inherent in your job. That is different than what are we going to really focus on with excellence? It's a different thing. They're in addition to, they're not exclusive of, right? But, and what is true is, once you declare the few things that you want to really focus on, then part of what's going to be really helpful to your 3,600 staff members is to then have those be the focus, right? What makes it really difficult is to have sort of fuzziness in the focus, because then every time any one of you open their, say something, even if it's a suggestion or an idea, the way that it gets heard by staff is, I just got directed to do that, right? Now with 3,600 people, there's few ways to be sloppier in efficiency than to have people trying to read between lines what's on said, to figure out what they should be doing. Much cleaner if you can say, here are the three things, go after them, come back, show us how you will, we're going to greenlight you through the process. And then he can assets allocate in such a way that the asset investments are aligned with the priorities. Does that make sense? Yeah. So homelessness, add in, because some of you, and all we're going to do at this stage is just put every idea down, not, don't worry about whether you love it the most or the least, just put every idea down.
Healthcare, I think, is so important, and I think that we can work with our community partners.
So in the next three to five years...
So with the healthcare.
Healthcare. And anyone that wants to embellish on any of these, feel free to embellish, just want to capture them all.
So there's a few points that I wanted to make in response to some of the comments that have been made. So, and I'll, I'll need some help with the language, Ms. Mather, because you're better at it than I am. But as an example, I was on the LVGEA board, and Mr. Aguero did a great presentation about the gap in healthcare for sports medicine. It's a, it's a booming, sports are booming in Southern Nevada, Nevada in general, and healthcare is lagging, and that gap is evident. He demonstrated it with data. So the question that I raised, which was echoed by other members of that board, was, what is the environment where healthcare will thrive here? And that is a question that is still unanswered by that board. And so getting back to what we talked about earlier, what I talked about was access to healthcare, access to education. Understanding the environment where education and healthcare can thrive is really important. And so it's representing the medical district, we can talk all we want about healthcare. When I, I've tried to recruit a healthcare company into town to expand, and their response was, we will absolutely not expand in Southern Nevada. There's a variety of reasons related to payment options for Medicaid, which the mayor talks about often, there's a variety of reasons related to education, but I think defining that environment where they can expand is the first step. So I think it's an underlying theme for me, when we're talking about priorities, is understanding what the environment is for something to thrive. Our environment is not conducive to excellence for all pockets of our community right now for healthcare. It's conducive for small pockets, for certain segments of our population to have access to healthcare. So that, that's one thing. When it comes to expanding access to healthcare, which I do think is a, is a critical for me, especially within the medical district, and I know the medical district can expand in other wards as well, I think, one, defining the environment, but also understanding that if we expand on healthcare, if we, if we grow the healthcare industry, that gives us more economic opportunity to resolve some of the other issues. That's how you pay for things, is you grow the economic base. And when we talk about diversifying our economy, the medical community is a great way to diversify our economy, and we have a population that is demanding it at this point. They're demanding access to healthcare. So it's incumbent upon us to understand the environment in which healthcare can grow, and then work within the parameters of what that environment is. That's true of education, that's true of transportation, that's true of all of those things. If we understand the environment where they will thrive and start chipping away at making that environment conducive to growth and opportunity, I think it changes our economic base and can pay for some of those things that we have to do. If you can put that in like four words, then you're good.
Yeah, I can't. Yes. And, leaders, if there are conditions that get in the way of aggressively making progress on a specific priority, I would want your staff to come back to you and say, yes, it was one of your top three, four, five, six, and as we've explored the current conditions, the current environment, the current momentum, we think this is not the one where our highest return is going to be.
Correct.
Right? So, am I, that would be a place that you'd be comfortable?
Yes.
Okay. So if that's the case, then that will, that's to come. Right? In a sequencing, if I just sequence it, starts with, what do the leaders want?
Also, I mean, somehow, some way, we have to be able to incorporate that we're data-driven, we're informed. So instead of saying, we're going to have excellent healthcare, when the healthcare is saying, we will not expand there, we have to understand why they will not expand there and create conditions where they will expand.
But what you could say, so the opportunity now is to say, for the next three to five years, one of the things that we want center stage in his mall of focus is this notion of healthcare. And what we mean by that is expanding access as quick as possible for current folks. What we mean is to get figuring out how we can maximize and use our leverage to improve conditions, to make more of it happen. Right? So this is a priority.
Yes.
Okay? And then, so that's one. There may be a litany of others, and we'll come back and we'll prioritize them. Then the next step is, he's going to sit with directors, they will talk through what they've heard from you, and then go sort of next level, right? Bring it back to you to sort of ratify. And then they'll go back and take it to deeper action plan level, implementation level. So some of these kinds of questions are going to be the things that will come later in the process, but none of it goes unless it matters a lot to you. Does that make sense?
I understand.
Okay.
Just wanted to ask the question, and going back here, because I know with Ward One, and that's where the UMC and our whole medical district's focused, because of the work he's doing in Ward One, which is part of the county, when, and I don't know what Councilman Creer, was he talking regionally about homelessness, or in the city? Because we're focused here now, I thought, on the city priorities that we control, what piece of this, Councilman Knutson, of what Puna's put up there for us, do you see is that specifically the city can control? I mean, obviously nationwide, we see this. So where, what's the focus specifically of our body to focus on what aspect of that? Or is it too global?
No, I, I think there's some very specific action items. If we understand, from my perspective, if we understand the environment of healthcare and the future of being healthcare, being a very competitive person, a competitive city, we want the future of healthcare to be in the heart of Las Vegas, in all of our wards. We know we need to have land in order for that to happen, because healthcare is going to grow. It's, it's going to happen because our population is going to grow. So we need to make sure there's land available. If the conditions for payment are not appropriate, then we know we need to focus down a government affairs strategy to start looking at, what are the conditions that will make that company grow in Southern Nevada? It's, it doesn't make sense for me to always talk about access to healthcare when we don't have anywhere to grow in the medical district, and the payment options aren't going to be supportive of that anyway. So we need to start chipping away at those things.
That's right.
And although we are not in control of healthcare, we are a city that can influence a lot, and we need to practice our level of influence with the county, who owns the most amount of land in the medical district, with the university, who owns quite a bit of land and has a pretty significant footprint, and with the state, who has expanded access and interest in making sure that we have a mental healthcare system so that we work on homelessness. So if we're able to articulate what is the environment for healthcare and education to be successful, and start chipping away at those pieces and parts, I think there's a greater opportunity than not.
They are focused.
City. There's going to be more to fill in. I'm adding, this is Dina, by the way, who is going to be, she is the...
She's the N Y.
...lead of the five who will own the strategic planning process. So, yeah, it's awesome that she's helping out. Yes, to everything you've just, everything you've just said, right? Those are the things that will get, that will reveal over time, but none of that's possible until leaders say, go after it, right? Whatever I declare is what I'm looking for opportunities to advance. Whatever I believe in the most strongly is where I am going to check in and be the most engaged. And so we can solve anything, because we're super capable, that begins with, is this the thing that we want to declare? Or one of the things that we want to declare is an area for him to go after. So healthcare, education, I've heard, if you want to add any to that, or come back to homelessness. So we're going to just bounce around and try to capture the ideas.
Can we add something new?
Of course.
Okay. So, there's two things. So because what Councilman Knutson had just said about running out of space, literally our city, if we think of it in another way, is we have a ton of space if we build up, right? If we build up. And what I mean when we, we build up, we look at the city of Las Vegas, and we look at all of the buildings, and I'll give a one, one for instance, we have a Starbucks right across the street from City Hall. It's a great piece of real estate. It's one story. That should be 10 stories. Our mayor has visions of 15, 17, 40-story buildings downtown. I mean, this is where we have to go to make sure that space doesn't limit us, is to build up, is to grow up. And then as we do that, to create more space for the city, we have to look at diversifying the economy with new companies, with jobs, period. Jobs, 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 jobs. So when we look at recruiting other big Fortune 500 companies to come here, I know the councilwoman and I took a trip to China and recruited five major multi-billion dollar companies to come to the city of Las Vegas. This is what we're looking at, is diversifying our economy to create jobs to where everything's not just dependent upon entertainment. So diversifying the economy by having more companies come to our city and growing up.
Diversify economy. The other thing that you said was, and taking a building from X number of floors to many more is very tactical.
But you have to plan that now, because the only way, yeah.
So if I zoom out, is it a general, like, I'm trying to get to the strategic priority for the next five years that we can pursue with excellence. So is it about maximizing existing space?
Without a doubt. Like, even our courthouse that we're building, we're only building it to five, five or six floors.
Once you declare the priority, it will have to apply everything.
We should have built that to 10 or 15 floors.
Okay. So I would look at city manager, so something that says maximizing city assets.
Existing real estate assets.
Or existing real estate assets?
Yes.
Is that the strategic, because that's a strategic priority, right? He could, he's going to sit down with 20 directors, if that's what you give them on the top list.
Right.
And they will then come back to you with, we heard you, there are ways that we think we can do that, right? Is that useful? Okay.
That Starbucks is a perfect location for Starbucks with 10 more stories on top of it.
Yes. So that's maximize the city's current real estate assets.
Because it's a waste of space. Total waste of space.
Okay. I want to come back to homelessness, because you put it there, and several have opined on it, just to flesh out a bit more of what that might mean to you as a strategic priority for the next three to five years.
You asking me?
Yeah, well, any of you, because I can tell it matters to all of you.
Well, you know, homelessness is in every single ward of this city.
That's right.
It's in every sector in the county, North Las Vegas, Henderson, and...
It is.
It's something that evolves around, revolves around public safety, evolves around health, revolves around public sanitation, quality of, it, it goes back into community for the citizens of our community. And so I think it has to be a, and it is, right? I mean, the city, prior to me getting aboard, obviously, has, has dedicated resources towards the, the goal of mitigating homelessness. I think we need to work better with the county, and with the state, and our federal delegations in order to find resources. You know, it also goes back into mental health in our community, right? Which the federal, federal government and the state need to play much, much, much greater role into working towards that with us.
So if in the next three to five years, you were articulated as a strategic priority, it would sound something like, and I need a reality check, in terms of homelessness, we've been doing a lot for a long time, we're going to continue that, but, or and, for the next four to five years, really focus more to increase the mitigation, right? So we're doing what we're doing, but drive harder.
I mean, the city itself, I, I personally think the city is driving hard, I, I really do. And they, the rubber meets the road when they're putting $20 million towards the courtyard, right? That's a big number for us, for, for the city of Las Vegas, whether it's via different grants, funds, general fund dollars, filling traffic dollars, it's a, it's a major commitment, a major lift.
So the question for you as leaders is, do you want, for the next five years, the city manager to focus even more so on it?
I don't think we have a choice. It's not, yeah, I don't, personally, I don't think it's a matter of wish lists. I think that, that is a, it has to be. You know, if you, we always go, I guess I go back to the other places we've, we've seen, and, you know, in, in LA County, homelessness grew by like 60% in like four or five years. I'm sure when they had 6,000, literally about under 50, 500 street homeless in, in LA, now they've got 30, they're probably saying, you know, yeah, it's probably an issue, right? Let's probably look at that. And it hasn't really become a, a DEFCON 10 issue until the last couple of years. And so if we don't go to DEFCON 10 in dealing with it and working to do it, then we're going to be 6, 12, 24, 48 before you know it.
Yeah.
Okay. I would like to just jump in, because I, I agree. One of the considerations in what I try to say, maybe not as articulately, is that homelessness is a symptom of larger issues at the federal and state level. So we don't have enough housing stock, but we haven't defined how much housing we actually need. We don't have an adequate mental healthcare system, but we haven't defined what a mental healthcare system is. So we are suffering from a lack of planning at the state and federal level, as are all other cities around the country. So I think defining that environment where you don't have homelessness is an important first step, because those are things that you can start tackling. We can start looking at the medical, medical district from a mental health perspective. We need to build out the mental healthcare system, and how as a city do we build that out?
Right.
And that's also a revenue source.
It all, it all ties and works into it. As you build it out, the health district, obviously, we can't be a great community from a, even though the University of Medical Schools come in, which is, you know, vitally needed, the expansion of GME vitally needed. We, we won't get there if we don't address the issues where the rubber meets the road in terms of addressing those issues.
So that would be for you a useful strategic priority. Okay. So that, so I'm going to leave it on in the way that we've, and part of it is going to be, if it is your priority, then you got to declare it, because that's what leaders do. They say, here's what we care about. Then, staff, bring it back. And if conditions currently are not conducive to making progress, we need you to tell us, and then we may move that priority until the timing's better, right? Or they may come back and say, because of current conditions, here's a little wave of opportunity that we can ride, in which case leaders say, good for you, go write it. So that will be part of what they've got to do. It shouldn't, however, change whether it for you is a significant priority for the next three to five years.
And like I said, the city is doing a lot. I mean, our numbers have gone down since our point in time count has happened, which is great. And we need to continue that, that trajectory. But we, and the only way to do that is if we continue to put our foot on the pedal.
That's, and that's...
And put the pedal on the ground.
And that's what this says to him. So we're going to keep it up there. So this is a strategic priority, but so...
And other cities have mitigated homelessness, right? It's not, it's not impossible. I don't think you can, but it is, it is possible. I don't think you can, but it is, it is possible.
We're all about what's possible right here, right?
Just because LA is going in opposite direction doesn't mean that other cities are not going in the right direction.
Well, they don't have the seven of you in this moment.
They don't. I agree. Write that down.
The, I want to now go to education. So, homelessness, you have an understanding of what is meant here by homelessness. Essentially, what I'm hearing is, we're doing an awful lot of really solid things, and this would say to the staff, step harder on the accelerator.
There's always more to do.
That's different than step hard on the accelerator, right?
I think, yeah.
Okay. So, that's what this suggests. This is a declaration as leaders that healthcare, let's, in the next three to five years, we want some excellence in progress in healthcare, because that'll put us on a glide path to where we want to be. And in the short term, the kinds of things that we're thinking about is expanding access to people who are here, figuring out what environments and conditions allow us to be excellent at, and then putting plans into place to go get that benefit for the community. Looking at you. Okay. And then, that better all be data-driven, or Councilman Knutson is going to rewrite you, is what we're saying to staff, yes?
I think they know that.
They already know that. I know, that's stated in the obvious. And then, were you going to say something?
I'm just listening.
Okay. Then, I want to go to education, and then we've had a couple of other things that have come up, want to flesh them out a little bit more. And again, where we are is, as many ideas as we can think of, of strategic priorities.
On the homelessness, because there's this silly little rule that we have to obey in the city where we can't caucus, as the Assemblywoman and I used to be able to in Carson, a lot of times, we don't know what's happening, because we're not all in the same meetings. But on the homelessness issue, I really have to give kudos to our staff, and I understand step on the accelerator. I'm like, let's do it yesterday. But some of the things that Mr. Parago and I and Scott Adams, our manager, that we've literally are looking at, so our staff has full-throttled on this homelessness, thanks to our mayor, we've got some great ordinances in place. But we've looked at, just now I can say, because we're all together, but Tom Parago's looking at BLM land, looking at a big thing of space. I'm just going to throw a name of a company out there, not meaning we're going to use this company, but Ahearn Rentals builds these modular little container things that could be like hosed out and really housy and cute. And again, as we look at this homelessness issue, it's not even so much of providing a roof over someone's head, because if they don't want to be there, they're leaving there. Or if they want to start a fire in there, they're leaving there. So, it's, it's so much deeper. But in, in all reality, I just want to thank Scott Adams, Tom Parago, our staff, because some of the conversations that I have in the Ward Six office, I don't get to share with my peers because of the silly no caucus rule. I think we should change that. But anyway, so I wanted to just throw that up.
Thank you. Tom, where are you in the audience? Just stand up, please. Let us properly thank you. Thank you, that was really generous. Education, let's add to education, what we mean. So, in the next three to five years.
So, in education, I have to commend the mayor and also, you know, prior to here with the development of the Social Youth and Innovation Department, which I think is extremely unique and something that cities do not do, and how it is totally and completely making a difference in the education of lives of kids, especially kids in my ward, who don't have access to our Smart Start buses, excuse me, that have access to our Smart Start buses, have access to our Rappi Run services, that have access to our Reinvent Schools. Those things are amazing, right? And to be honest with you, I wasn't as fully in tune to all of that prior to me getting out council. And, and I think that it's wonderful. And so, the, that is one way that the city and the mayor sort of tied back, what can the city do, right, versus what everybody else can do? That's one. So, I would say the expansion of Social Youth and Innovation Department, obviously, the medical school coming into the city of Las Vegas, I think is greatly important, the expansion of the health district. And it ties back to education, because anytime we can get more professionals into the community, I think also lends, lends a higher rise and a higher tide towards bringing education to the forefront.
So, you just, that was, you got the prop, right? He gave you some love?
Well, he gave, and two, I mean, I really, it has been remarkable. Four years ago, we started preschools. Preschools, Head Starts used to be, and we know birth to 10, but especially before kindergarten entry, how important that is. And that should probably expand as well, as our youth innovation. Because in addition, we have Safety, which is around Southern Nevada, but big, big proponents out of the city before and after school, because we can't touch Clark County School District other than being of support to them.
And that's actually, that's
The tutoring, the summer programs, those are all part.
Batteries included, all the programs, we bringing kids into the community and getting, taking kids who have idle time and giving them something to do, actually putting in the work.
So, maybe expand supportive programs by the city that we're allowed.
So, good, so expand existing, so go step on the accelerator, right?
And getting more of the busing into the communities that can't travel or get there to these preschools.
If you were to say, double down
That does it.
On the awesome progress that we've already made on education, they'll come back with ideas. And actually, the creation of the departments, right? I don't know if there's another municipality in this country
Yeah, I agree.
That has got a, got a department.
Yeah.
You did. Now, it wasn't because there was any planning meeting where someone said, you know, we should start a department. It wasn't that, it was because seven leaders led by you, but it was seven leaders.
The need was there, because we see the disingenuousness of challenged communities not getting the same type of help. So, rather than fight them and argue, we said, what can we do? And we started to do something.
And it took leaders, you were the, probably the only one there, maybe you were at that time.
Yes.
It took seven leaders to say, education matters to us, right? Once you do that, the staff will come back with amazing ideas, and there's ideas we haven't even yet contemplated, that are going to come into play. But everything follows focus, right? So, it was the fact of declaring education, which was like unheard of 10 years ago when you declared it. Everyone was like, oh, it's because she started the Meadows, that's why we have education. No, it was because that's what the city needed, and you knew it. So, you sort of evangelized, seven of you said, yes, education is a strategic priority. Few municipalities declare it, but you didn't in 14? It was in 14, and again in 17, it was there, the last two, you've declared it, and now there's a bunch of cool
The buses. The other part has been there, the preschools, we've got four, and that goes back much further.
So, expand to really double down, right, on these? The one other thing, though, that I've heard a couple of times, that we're still calling, that we're calling education, but I think we may mean it differently, there's education of little people, pre-K, right, in North. I've also heard workforce education, that a condition requisite for success in healthcare is about having, you know, to be business friendly. So, if I, I just want to lift that up, because you've said it, and we'll put it up there again, all we're trying to do is capture every idea.
I'd also like to add that Councilman Creer mentioned K, we added pre-K to 16. But looking at, from a medical district perspective, academic medicine and academic research, all of that is more federal funds coming into Nevada, that helps expand the economic diversification. So, as we think about education and diversifying our economy, they are, they are intertwined. And thinking about it from an academic at a higher, higher education level, has everything to do with the economy.
So, if I, if we look at workforce education, the suggestion is that in the next four to five years, a strategic priority could be go doggedly after figuring out, right, trying to solve for the trained workforce that the healthcare industry would require.
So, I'm thinking, I don't know if our youth programs could take another path or complement that workforce component, Punam, because we do have programming with our youth, and especially our middle schoolers and high schoolers, if there could be like an internship concept developed where we are growing our own and we are motivating our youth to take a look at STEM careers, because we know tech is going to go through the roof, and if they don't have those tech skills for coding or whatnot, they're going to be left behind the divide. And in order for them to have that quality of life, it was very telling in the slides that a lot of folks didn't feel like the city was affording economic opportunity to go upward. So, can we capitalize and share that and kind of be helpful in saying, hey, these are careers that are needed, but we need to start planning for them now so that we're not slammed in 2050 with a shortfall of doctors, of tech people, and whatever the up and coming careers are.
Councilwoman Diaz, if you don't mind. Keep in mind that out of our Ward Five Works program, something has come out of it, which is going to benefit not only just the ward, but the entire community with our Ward Five Works workforce center that we're doing, focusing on STEM, focusing on manufacturing, construction trades, and also on the healthcare sectors, right? And so, the city has planted a seed, and it, from the conversation we just had, sort of reiterates the fact that there's a need of it. And, and one of the reasons is, is that the city is taking upon itself to create its own, is, you know, in my ward in South Westside, there's a number of workforce centers or programs in place, right? But they aren't, they're focused on what they're focused on, whatever that may be. Culinary, which is great, fine, recidivism, which is fine. But we know that moving forward, this is where this community is going and growing, and we need to tackle that. So, we are moving forward with something that, just similar to what you and Councilman Knutson both have stated, and it's going to benefit everybody.
And then, did we write down pre-K under education, just to make sure that we don't lose it?
We did have it in our 2030, I think, we had it up here, but not on here, so we can put that.
I think to echo the mayor's comments, I mean, that needs to continue to expand.
Yeah, so that's
I know that the city has stepped up in hopes that eventually the Clark County School District can get up to speed and service all of our children in, in the schools, because I think pre-K centers belong there. It's convenient for parents to drop off all of their children in one side, or sometimes you have two, and you're dropping off one middle, one elementary. And so, I think, you know, just trying to see what we can do to move that forward, not just that, what we can do, but, I don't know, be good stewards and just try to give the access that is so much needed, and we know that. That's indicator, early indicator of success, is whether the child had access to pre-K or not. And so, if we're talking about workforce and being college and career ready, that's at the forefront of it all. So, we got to start early in order for us to build and have strong students.
So, I just whispered with your city manager, so this workforce education component, if you said in the next four to five years, we want to really get some excellence around our workforce education strategy as it relates to enriching the pipeline for healthcare. I said to him, would that be useful as a strategic priority? He said, yes. Because that, and actually what he observed is that it actually blends, it's sort of the Venn diagram where these two come together, right? That it could be elementary all the way up to doctors.
Mm-hmm. Post-secondary.
It all ties. I mean, I'm looking at Dr. Lisa Morris Hibler and all those, you better roll up your sleeves and get your running shoes on, because
No, we're not going to
It's funny, all of her departments, all we're talking about fall under her community services with the team. But yeah, it all ties. And I think it has been a, been a priority, but it'll, it'll continue to be, and it all ties it together.
Okay. Any more on this one? Then I want to jump up here.
Yeah, let me just add one on. It shouldn't just be healthcare. I mean, we, we should really be studying where the job shortages are in the city of Las Vegas. For example, maybe there aren't enough plumbers out there to build houses. So, we as a city, I don't know how we would do this, but we should be partnering up with the business community and maybe the trade unions to see what we can do to help a kid go into a program where he becomes a plumber and makes pretty good money. So, the, I don't know how exactly what our role would be, but we should be involved in that, partnering up with the, you know, the College of Southern Nevada and some of these other higher education programs. So, that's something I think that we, because that's going to help the economy, that's going to help create jobs, that's going to help diversify the economy, that's going to put people to work, which is going to reduce crime. So, if there's any way we can get involved in that, I think we should be a partner for that.
And I'd like to add to that, that we are working with Dr. Jara, even though we have no connection really to control the school district, Dr. Zaragosa out at the community at the College of Southern Nevada, to go ahead in the school district and get the union apprentice programs and summer programs going, so students can begin to see if they have a proclivity for interest in that area. It's a partnership, and to me, these are expanded partnerships where we can be influential. One of the things that's continuously missing in our workforce development are our social service needs individuals who choose not to take a profession in STEM, but are people-focused, and that whole piece is desperately going to be needed going forward. As you talk about the homeless situation and education, of course, there are those that are going to be in the sciences and math, but the reality is, we are missing that big piece. And if we don't do more to help partner with our educational partners in Southern Nevada, because that's what we have, only our control is, it's not the legislature, I mean, they are totally in control, but that we need to really focus on the softer side to provide those of us who aren't into, well, maybe they all are, I'm not, into the STEM programs.
So, that would be in terms of high demand, that would be high demand.
Or the workforce healthcare. I mean, you know, you've got the services right there to really support that STEAM, not only STEM.
Yep.
Is this useful? Scott, I'm looking at you. As a strategic priority, if we said, really hunker down on workforce development, real excellence in the next four and five years, and focus on healthcare, because we're going big, right? You already made that declaration. And also remember to maintain an emphasis or think about filling the high-demand jobs in the future, because you're building a workforce system.
I just want to reiterate
Is that two different things, or is that? He's going to think about it.
So, I want to reiterate, I agree with Councilman Anthony, and like I said, with, we're moving forward, not just healthcare, but in the STEAM, in the workforce manufacturing, and, you know, we've gone in San Antonio with Dr. Zaragosa and the workforce team at CSN with what they've done in manufacturing, in bringing in Boeing, and bringing in major corporations to, 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 to build a workforce community. I was in Reno for National Nevada League of Cities and took a tour of Tesla. And if any of you guys have not taken a tour of Tesla, I urge you, if you're up north again, to go take a look. And just the variety of jobs that they offer, and the, just the vastness of an industry that's there is, is, is really mind-boggling. And you're 100% right, and, so we have to diversify, and it's not just healthcare, which is a huge component of it. Huge component.
So, I'm going to leave it up there as workforce education would be a strategic priority, healthcare and high-demand jobs. And that has, is that a useful
Yes.
Priority? Okay, so the city manager said, yep, if you give me that, we will run that ball, come back to you with ideas of how we can run it. Thank you. So, jump up, diversify economy, anything to add to that, it came up?
So, I think when we look at diversifying economy, we have to go back to the business climate. And I have to say, in the short time that I've been here, these directors and everybody at the city is amazing of thinking outside the box.
So, if you have to say it, then go ahead and say it.
I'm going to say it. You guys are amazing. And, but one of the things that I think is important is looking at that business climate, which I know we're already doing, but looking at some of the ordinances and the regulations that might stifle the smaller businesses, because what was important on that screen was quality of life. And that comes down to affordability of jobs, cost of living, and then it encompasses everything, education and healthcare. So, I would like to see us really look at our business climate, which I think is great right now, but maybe we can do better, and see what we could do better, actually.
So, yeah, business climate would be one. So, yeah, business climate would be one way to achieve diversified economy. And so that would be, so as a strategic priority, you need more direction in terms of what we mean by diversified economy?
Well, I think any more embellishment on those areas that you think are, that have potential for economic diversification, I, just as a way of background, go back to our last economic development strategy that the council adopted was 2012. In that strategy, we embraced the healthcare industry as the primary priority for diversification because it's the only sector in the economy that didn't decline during the Great Recession. It would create a lot of jobs and they would be high-paying jobs. But since then, we've been embarking on a number of other areas of effort, our smart city innovation efforts and a few other things that could yield a great deal of potential. So any embellishment on what you mean by economic diversification would be helpful to us.
Well, I think that as our EUD team goes out and works to bring in industry, I think it's important that they look at all facets and work in combination with Mr. Sherwood and bringing in companies of the future and working collaboratively, obviously with GOAT from the state, right? How do we, how do we attract a Tesla to Las Vegas instead of it being Astoria County, right? How does that come into Vegas when they're going to play thousands of people? Where is that? What's next? And the list is long of industry that can be coming to Las Vegas. We've got a great community, low-tax environment. Where do we fall short and what do we need to do to work together to bring in major, major, major industry?
I can, I think this is a super interesting challenge, and I, when I first got elected, I had a room full of developers and asked them, like, what is the environment for you to be successful? And they came back consistently with land use and zoning, which is why the city has such a critical role in partnering with all these other industry leads, because land use and zoning, that's us. The challenge with the city is landlocked, there's not a whole lot of places to grow except up. And so the mayor brought in, I'm talking about going up, I think that's the right way to talk about it. The challenge is trying to figure out how that happens. And I know one of the things that I've talked to the city manager about and his team is the opportunity for some of the big-box stores that are no longer being used, like just rethinking how we planned that part of our community, because it doesn't, it's changed, everything's different now with, because of technology. And so rethinking what's in place and how do we create zoning and licensing opportunities where it's different in the future, but still preserves our same quality of life, because I think that's really consistent with what the residents have told us, is preserving quality of life, but thinking about what is going to be different. And that's where I think there's opportunity, building up and reusing what we currently have in stock.
And we haven't really talked about, for the most part, zoning, which plays a huge role. I know we talked about previously about form-based coding and how we have that in the medical district and have a couple of beta projects in place, but that's got to be the topic of, I would think, of us moving forward, because it plays a lot of roles in a lot of the things that we're doing.
I think to your point, I mean, we need to see how form-based code plays out. It is in its experimental phase. So I think we have to keep very, we have to keep our eyes on it very closely in seeing if it is a driver of our economy and their city, because now we've allowed more freedom and flexibility and how they can build upward instead of just staying to one story. And so I think that to the diversifying economy, I'm going to echo all of your sentiments, I think that we have to remain nimble and we have to remain forward-thinking, and I think that we constantly have to be evaluating our ordinances or our way of doing business so that it doesn't become outdated. Because with the changes in technology, processes are going to change, and sometimes the way that our ordinances are crafted, it's just going to hinder, it's just going to be a no because the ordinances speak that way. And so we just have to always have to be analyzing and thinking about, are they still relevant? And are they getting in the way of people wanting to conduct business because we have too many hoops to go through versus other entities that are near us? And so we obviously don't want to lose that business.
Let me pose a question to anyone who wants to answer. I've heard, go get a whale or an elephant, right? Like, go close the big one with the iconic name and lots of employees in terms of a way to diversify the economy. It's one way to go, right? And if you said, I think, to the city manager, in the next four or five years, go close one of those, would that be something that you could, that would be a strategic priority for you?
We could, yes.
Yeah, so if you said that, you know, the staff is going to deliver whatever you want. So if you said, go close a big one, land an elephant, they would do it. The other option would be to say, we want diversification in little bits, right? As opposed to, we want you to go land an elephant. They're very different, and yet they're both diversification, and they will have significant implications for how he conducts the Band of 3600. So I just am curious about how you're looking at it, right? Like, so I heard Tesla, right? And then I heard, but we're landlocked, so we could maybe look at big box. But if we're building up, if that's how we're going to maximize...
I would answer your question is, go really big, because going really big means all the other little small things will thrive because of it. It doesn't seem like it at the time, but when you add a significant number of people in a small area, all the small businesses will thrive because of that.
Okay.
So go big.
You know, then businesses who are thinking about relocating to, I'm going to say Southern Nevada, are thinking about, I think, they think Las Vegas first, right? They think about, we're moving our company to Vegas. Every other jurisdiction can say what they want to, and I'm sure they have a lot to say, but the bottom line is, we're moving to Vegas. And so whether we play a direct role in that, we obviously play a partner, a cooterman role to the county or whomever for everything that goes on here, right? And if, it might be located in the county, but nobody says, you know, the Raiders are coming to Clark County, Nevada. They're the Las Vegas Raiders, not the Clark County Raiders. And so it makes it, even as a partner role.
And I think I may add to that, when companies come in from around the world to the mayor's office, because they know the name Las Vegas, they don't know Henderson, they don't, unless they have a connection. We do partner with the entire community, and based on what Councilman Knutson has been saying, the reality when something very large comes, we know the land is up in the northwest and also in North Las Vegas, or maybe it is Henderson because there's plenty of land. And we do work collaboratively with them, knowing that hopefully when something appropriate that needs to be in the heart of the city where all roads lead and where the history and the center of government is and so much more, that they then will be sharing with us and working collaboratively. Because we don't have that land, and then when you talk to developers, obviously the cost to go up is huge and the higher you go. So it is something that we've been looking at, but I think it is our only choice really because of the fact we're landlocked, unless you can couple together pieces of land, which I know the city's been trying to do, is purchase sites where you are taking lots of little parcels and putting them together. From 20 years ago when Oscar took office and we went to the Rouse Company for a quick little, what do we need, what are the priorities for a world-class city? The first thing that came out of the mouth of that director was, you need land. So you have to find land, and what they did was, the council and the management, city management in 1999, 2000, 2001, began the work on the Union Pacific land, because that was the only large piece within and made the trade with the industrial park up in the northwest. So the reality is we are landlocked, but it's the partnership with the other entities that will do that. And hopefully, North Las Vegas shines on us as they're getting more and more, and as we refer, because we were very involved in trying to get the Raiders into Cashman, which is our remaining large piece. What is that, 57 acres?
50.
50 acres. I keep trying to make it bigger.
So if I could just jump in here real quick on the issue of landing the big one, you're kind of getting into what used to be my wheelhouse early in my career, and we have been on a course of focusing on two areas where we can be successful in economic development. One area is in redevelopment, is priming, continuing to prime the pump in our urban core and create, make it an attractive place where business wants to invest and move their company. So I think, you know, on one hand, you're going to see redevelopment as a way you bring a presence of companies or a company into our community. Another area that we've been looking at is where do we actually have land? And that is where we're land-challenged, the only place left that we can go horizontally is in the far northwest. So we have been spending a lot of time on our sections 31 and 22, because those are areas where we've got large tracts of land that we could set up for that kind of enterprise. So I just wanted to help you frame that discussion that, because everywhere in between, we're built out. The very far west of our community, which is where we're going to see some considerably more development, is all residential, and the only places we're going to see commercial development or industrial development is either going to be in the urban core through redevelopment or in the northwest on large tracts of horizontal land. And that kind of limits you, which is why we haven't done some of the things that you might see being done in Henderson and North Las Vegas and other peer communities in Southern Nevada until we're set up for those horizontal enterprises.
And could you answer to that about the BLM land that's not part of the national park, but the BLM, are there any opportunities that you see that we have not taken advantage of?
There could be. I think we've done a good job of that. I think that was the lands bill that was approved with the Tulley Springs bill that set up section 22. We were granted out of BLM inventory, a 640-acre tract, an entire section, and we're working on section 31 as well, which is in concert with the BLM. So whatever we do, we have to work with the BLM, because that's where we get our land from.
So this strategic priority, this has been rich conversation, by the way. So the diversification of the economy, if, and I'm going to look for a reality check from you at the back end, in answer to the question, what can we do with excellence over the next three to five years to put us on a glide path to 2050? One of the strategic priorities could be, city manager, double down, step harder, focus more on things that would ultimately diversify our economy. So it could be redevelopment, it could be work on an elephant, like close the big one, right? It could be, okay, but they will come back to you with, if you say, this is one of our key priorities, they will sufficiently focus and come back with ideas of how they think that can best be accomplished in the next three to five years?
Yep.
Yeah, okay. So we will leave that up there, so we know what that means. And then, okay, then this is another one, what else?
Well, based on, based on the survey that we heard today and based on every single survey that we've done, the number one priority for our residents is public safety.
I was waiting for you to say that, sir.
Probably put that one up there.
I took, it was 11:30, I took the over, so I just lost.
So, and if I could just add a little bit to that, there's really, there's two parts to public safety. There's, people want to be safe and people want to feel safe. So nobody in this room wants to be a victim of a crime. I mean, nobody wants to have their house broken into, nobody wants to be a victim of robbery, burglary, and the other, but the other part of that is, people want to feel safe when they walk out of their front yard, when they walk to their car, when they go to the park, they want to feel like they're safe. So when you're looking at, people want to be safe, most people want to put that on the, kind of on the backs of, traditionally would be police officers, corrections officers, firefighters, paramedics, first responders, that's kind of their job to do that. And that's not the case. Every single person at the city of Las Vegas, doesn't matter what their job is, they should be thinking, well, what can I do in my job to reduce crime, specifically crime? The second part is, people want to feel safe. So when they walk out of their front door, they don't want to see junk cars parked in the street, they don't want to see graffiti, though, I mean, I know graffiti is a crime and Oscar wanted to cut their fingers off, which is fine with me, but the people don't consider that, you know, part one violent-type crime. So people want to feel safe, and every single person at the city of Las Vegas in their job should be thinking about, well, what can I do to make sure that when somebody is at a park or driving around the city or in their block, what can I do to eliminate something or add something where people feel proud of their neighborhood, they feel like this is a safe place to be? Even though there may not be any particular part-one crimes occurring, they need to be able to feel that. So if people don't feel safe, if people are being victims of a crime, the rest of this stuff doesn't really matter much. But a lot of that, a lot of the other priorities kind of fall into public safety. I mean, workforce education, if somebody has a job, they're less likely to commit a crime, and they're more likely to buy a home and take care of their neighborhood, that sort of thing. So that's really, I think, the number one focus.
And so to piggyback on what Councilman Anthony just talked about in terms of public safety, something that I'm experiencing a lot of in my ward is the squatting issue. And how can code work more seamlessly with Metro on really clamping down on these uninhabited homes or, let's say, owner-vacated homes that are not really present and not really responsible for the property? How can we, as a city, work a solution out? It's unfathomable to me that we have those diligent neighbors reaching out to us, they have eight code complaints, and then the house gets lit on fire. Why did it take eight times for someone to call in that they're trespassing the property, they don't live there, it's not safe? Eight times, and then it catches on fire, almost putting other lives at risk, because if it's a windy day, that fire is going to spread really quickly to the other homes. So for me, it's about, how can we be more effective and put things to rest quickly? Because we've let a lot of properties just sit vacant for a long time. And I think that we owe it to our neighborhoods on that front of the public safety front to have a quick resolution. If a homeowner is not being responsive and responsible for their property, I think something has to happen because those other neighbors are at risk with us just leaving it open and vacant and boarding it, and then they don't board it, and then they get in, and then they light it up. And so that's something that's happening quite frequently in my ward, and I'm a little frustrated with it, and I would like to see us come up with the remedy and something that's quick, and I don't want to hear from my community that they've had to phone it in at least a minimum of eight times.
I would like to add to that, I do think, that even though I just saw the sign, this is the mayor speaking, identify yourself. We've gone two and a half hours, nobody's identified themselves, but thank you for the sign, whoever put that up. We should read it. You know, coupling these things and having lived this life now for these nine years, watching it, I'd like to see a concentration, I just assumed that was the priority, it always is, you will never have business investment, people won't live if your community isn't safe. So safety's just given. But in light of what Councilman Anthony said and what Councilwoman Diaz just said, I think we need to make a stronger effort in the preventative end of it. So what is that? I mean, as we spend our money, where are the pockets that we need to? I remember the days when it was Neighborhood Lift with Wells Fargo helping us, we led the nation in foreclosures, we led the nation in foreclosures. So boarded up buildings and vagrants and everything, it was at its height. So my sense is anything preventative, and then we need to have, develop... height. So my sense is anything preventative, and then we need to have, develop the arm of enforcement so there's a way to make action happen. There's got to be action. You can't just tell people a fine of fifty dollars or whatever. We need something, we need the help from your team to figure out how do we implement this and stop and be preventative so you don't have that.
If I could use as an example, something we just brought to you that's like that. We have gotten very strategic in our approach on fire risk on multifamily units. Let's identify those areas where we have the greatest risk and work on those first.
Yes, absolutely. Excellent.
Madam, you mind if I sort of piggyback on Councilwoman Diaz's statement, especially since we share some of the same sentiments. You know, when I first got in office and riding through older communities, there's so many abandoned homes, burnt-out homes. And the challenge also is, are these homes, some of them have been there in perpetuity. They've been there for ten, fifteen, twenty years, and no one's done nothing with them. And then they become squatter paradise and the whole nine. And, and I was saying, how do we change this? Now, one of the things that I think needs to happen, and I think it should be a priority of the city, especially in our older districts, is that it, they has to have statute. The legislature has to pass something that says, you know, whether it's going to be abandoned for five years, ten years, you have to do something with it. I don't believe that the city has the ability to, to tell them, you need to tear this down, grade it, or do something. But the legislature can. And I, and I would be very happy to work with you to, to, to make that a priority of, of the city, to go to them, to figure something out. And it would have to be for the entire jurisdictions, but I think that's fine. So.
And if I may suggest, start with legal, because everything, go first to legal.
Yeah. And, and then my second part is that, you know, since, and this also falls within Councilwoman Diaz, because we share downtown, when we talk about public safety, do we or do we not need to bifurcate commercial versus neighborhoods? Because how we keep the downtown corridor commercial district safe, it's a little bit different than the way that we, our residents. Not that one is more important than the other, but I think the focus, do we, we have, I don't think in the past, we've said, public safety. But how do we keep the downtown corridor and our tourism safe? And then how do we keep our neighborhood safe and our parks? Is that-
That's good. Delineate and find out if there's a difference.
Yeah. Because it's not, it's not one size fits all because downtown's a whole different ballgame.
So, go ahead. I really need to add this to what we're talking about here and how the city of Las Vegas is going to grow. Because if you think about all the cities across the United States, Boulder City has the largest geographical, okay, and that's simply because their council kept annexing dirt, okay? Dirt, 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 right? So within the northwest where we are, we've got city and we've got county islands. But there is a lot of dirt that we could, and I'm putting this out there because I want Mr. Perrigo and Mr. Adams and our staff, this is something that I think in order to have the city of Las Vegas grow, this has to be in the forefront of our mind, is to get more land from the BLM or with the parcels that are out there that are just dirt, make it attractive to those parcel owners, because we know most of them, to annex that dirt into our city. So number one priority needs to be annexation with dirt from the BLM and dirt that's just sitting there, that's owned by some of our friends that own it, the developers out there that are just keeping it dirt. So, and then we have a place to grow. Besides growing up, we can grow out, and we should take the Boulder City example and apply it to the city of Las Vegas. So I think that really should be priority, Mayor. What do you think?
Yeah.
So if I added that, and I was just looking at city manager, does this work, if I added in here, so there's discussion about is it strategic priority, the next four to five years, be excellent at the following, really expend some energy around maximizing real estate, right? Existing real estate, building up, zoning, permitting, and I just also heard annexation, go get dirt. Is that, so Scott, I'll look at you. Is that part of what, for you would be a singular strategy? Or is that two different ones?
Yeah, I mean, well, there'd be, as you've laid out, many facets of the strategy.
Right. So the direction that you've been given as leaders is focus on real estate.
Focus on real estate again, because that's what makes us bigger, more viable. When we have the dirt to negotiate, I'll give you a great example. So if, let's say, I'm just going to throw Amazon out there. Let's say we, because I know our manager tried Amazon a few years, a couple of years ago. Let's say we attract big corporations like that, and we have more to offer them to start bartering with. I want you to think about a corporation like Amazon or Google, and then I want you to think about the city of Las Vegas, giving them such incentives to come with the caveat of building a tiny town. Each of these big corporations, we have the land, the dirt for them to build. And behind their space, they have to build a tiny town. We give them free land, they build a tiny town. With that tiny town comes counselors, mental health, job creation, and now all of a sudden, the homelessness bill burden is now shared, right? So it's shared by companies that want to work together with us and shared by big corporations. And, and I will tell you, some of the corporations, I know I'm just the mayor pro tem, but I actively recruit companies outside of Las Vegas. Two months ago, I was in LA, and every time I do, I bring our EUD department in my office. I'm like, listen, here's another one, like go fishing, like, you know, this guy can bring in three hundred people. But at the same time, as we are courting these companies to come to the city of Las Vegas, we also have to be giving them the vision of being a true city partner and building little tiny towns behind them to then lift the burden besides the city of being a true partner with these corporations. So that's the main reason for annexing this land, so we have that negotiating ability.
Great. Okay. So we've included it under the larger strategic, it's about leveraging real estate, existing, new, annexing. Yep. What else? So public safety, I just want to play this one back because this was pretty cool. Public safety is that you don't have an option as to whether that's a priority or not. It is. This is about strategic focus for the period ahead. And what I heard were the word prevention. I also heard preemptive, right? What can we do in ordinance to minimize blighted neighborhoods, fire hazards, like a bunch of stuff that is preventive, but it's also preemptive, right? In terms of, so that by itself, sorry.
I'll, I'll, I'll with you.
That by itself, I just looked at Scott, said, would this be a sufficiently clear strategic priority, to which his response was?
Yes.
Yes.
You know, and also with public safety with the city, as we looking at delineating residential, commercial, we also need to address our marshals, the role that they play in expansion of that, and also our detention center. You know, we, we operate our own detention center. And I think, I don't know, we don't talk about it a lot. We don't, we don't talk about it a lot, our, our detention center, but it's there, and it's there every day, and it's, and, and, and man, our team does an amazing job operating that facility, and it plays a major role. So I think we need to, I'm not saying change or anything, but I think we need to-
So when you-
That should obviously be segmented out when you talk about public safety.
Right. And so when you, if this were one of the key priorities that the council, part of what they would want is for a broad look at-
Yes.
How to-
Well, just to be specific, when it comes to public safety, there's, there's two parts. There's reducing crime.
Yep.
So we have to reduce the number of burglaries, reduce the number of robberies, we have to take strategies to do that. And then the second one is quality of life stuff. It's the broken windows theory, where you fix broken windows, you get rid of abandoned houses, you get rid of shopping carts. That's all the stuff that makes people feel unsafe. It's the broken windows theory. So reducing crime is primarily the professionals do that, even though everybody can do something. The quality of life, the broken windows theory, everybody can be involved in that to some extent.
Which is exactly where you started us on the topic, because you said there's crime and that is how we feel, right?
Right. And, and you know, I mean, if you get, if you get down into the, you know, the, the basics, it's the, it's the police, it's corrections, it's the attorneys, and it's the courts.
The courts, yeah.
And we have all of those. We have police, we have corrections, attorney, court, and then you have to add in the firefighting mechanism, that's public safety, paramedics, that's public safety. So, I mean, you could spend, you could spend a lot of time talking about that. But that's really what, what you're looking at, is crime, quality of life, like Scott mentioned, you know, the fire, the fire stuff, you know, that's a good strategy for, for an issue that came up that involved public safety. So.
Yeah. No, this is a solid, city manager says, yes, if this were one of the key priorities you wanted us to focus on.
You need to put fire, fire safety up there. I mean, fire should be up there.
So it's police, fire, detention, courts?
Yeah, but-
So we'll just mention that there.
We have a new fire station open up tomorrow. It's got a huge, a new, a new truck that is having, I forgot the, it's some major, I don't know, truck, so it's really cool.
So this is Scott Adams again. Keep in mind, one of the reasons I've got all the directors out here listening is so they can hear the dialogue and get a semblance of your legislative intent behind these priorities. So you're, you're giving us those priorities with a level of embellishment. They're hearing the discussion, and then as we talked about earlier, we're going to go to work after today to put more detail, strategy detail on these priorities and bring it back to you. And that's why I thought it was important they heard your discussion. So that as we start to do that, you, your, your discussion informs how we, how we put that detail on it.
I mean, a perfect example is when you don't think of this as public safety, but you know, Jerry Walker goes in and paints over a wall that looks like crap. And, I mean, that's the best thing that happened, that people walk outside and say, hey, look at that, that's a great looking wall. This is, that's your neighborhood now, which means they feel better about it, which means criminals start thinking about, well, you know, this is a, maybe I need to go somewhere else where, you know. So it's stuff that, that's, painting a wall, nobody thinks of that as public safety, but it, it is. It's public safety, neighborhood, quality of life, things like that. Everybody can do a little bit something in that area.
Love your neighbor, paint their wall. Just kidding. It is eleven forty-four. Lunch is here. You so far have got seven strategic priorities listed. And so I'm going to suggest that we now take a break. You'll tell us for how long?
Yes.
Thirty minutes?
What do you think, thirty, thirty minutes? Okay, let's recess-
Thirty minutes, bye, we'll come back.
For thirty minutes at twelve fifteen.
And be contemplating what else needs to be up there. Because after lunch, we're going to finalize this list of seven, and then we'll go into the, which ones are our top.
And lunch is out to your right and to our left. Twelve fifteen, return.
They just hired the last round of them.
So there, so there, what is that, educate me about the outcomes, what are these outcomes for, what can you do to the fire?
Hi, everybody. You've got 30 seconds.
I haven't noticed anything.
These are famous. No, he knows. I keep telling him. Okay, everybody. Are we ready? Phones back off, tummy's full, and we've lost Poonam again. Why do I do this? We're a minute over. Gives you time to get up for one more snack. Somebody up here is drinking Scotch, I want you to know. Whose is that Scotch?
That's iced tea without the ice. But I'll take some if somebody has it.
There we go.
Thank you.
All right, we're ready.
I just got busted because I heard her say, "We have 30 seconds." I went to get cookies. It was a complicated set of options. It took 40 seconds. Thank you for the public humiliation. It is good for me.
It's just payback. It's just payback.
So you've done great work. I want you to just look at it before we... Oh, sorry, go ahead.
So, Poonam, no, I just wanted to add to the public safety conversation that for my ward, it's important to feel safe in the parks. And I know that public safety in the parks has been something that my community has been clamoring for, and so I just wanted to make sure that that gets addressed. How do we make our parks safer? And sometimes our community stops going and using the space and surrenders the space, and I want to see the opposite happen, where we feel safe and empowered to continue to use the children playground area, or the amenities offered in the park, and not just say, "Weird, people are there, and I don't want to go, and I don't feel safe there," and so they stop going.
So we added, we delineated residential commercial. Previously, we added public spaces to it, so that we're expressly declaring that. So two things. One, before lunch, I said we had seven, but then, as we were looking at them, we actually thought, "We think you have six." So let me tell you why we think you have six. We had education twice. We had workforce education. Then we had education on its own. I included them twice to get to seven. We actually think it's a priority around education that is continuing, except with a subtle difference being that in the next four to five years, you're going to go more focused on workforce, right? Preparedness of workforce, that would still include pre-K all the way up, but it's more with a workforce focus, right? This emphasis, high-demand jobs, healthcare field. So that then puts, yeah, this puts this education subset, right, they're together, essentially. So that's how we get to six. Anyone not agree?
There are two things that we just haven't talked about, and I don't know where they fit up there. They probably fit in somewhere. But I know we have an amazing parks and recreation amenities throughout our community, and so we also have fewer parks and recreation amenities than most other places in the country. And so looking at green space, recreational facilities per resident, I think, is an important consideration, and one of the great things that we do have control over. So I think that has a lot to do with quality of life and how we allocate parks and recreation. I think it's worth at least mentioning, and while you're figuring out where it fits on the space up there, housing is just another one. I still don't understand completely our role in housing on any part of it, and so just something to talk about.
Housing. Role in housing. So I'm looking at the city manager. Yeah, I think, so that's how I'm hearing it, too. So I'm going to put it up. It will now be your seventh, and it'll be about parks and public spaces. The strategic priority then would be that over the next four to five years, focus here and deliver more. And then you would then talk with the team and bring it back to you with suggestions as to how that might be accomplished. Yes?
Parks and open spaces. How does culture fit in? And maybe Ally, I don't want to put that in. Could we ask Ally? I mean, are there plans out of her department? Any priorities there that maybe should fit or not? Is that right, Scott?
Arts and culture?
As it fits into the parks and open spaces, public spaces.
It could. It could. I mean, as it overlaps with the...
Could we ask Ally?
It may, if you're trying to fit it on paper, like maximizing real estate, it could fit under there, is how we utilize the city's real estate and looking at it from a perspective of greening up Las Vegas for recreational use in addition to public art and public culture. Just as a suggestion.
Specifically, the parks and open spaces, one of the long-term goals that we can leave out for a 2015 plan would be really developing a stronger science and cultural infrastructure, such as the zoo.
A Botanic Garden, Science and Culture Museum, like some of these amenities that we still don't have in Las Vegas, a beautiful art museum, of course, developing a stronger infrastructure for the performing arts and building a network of performance spaces, including regional equity theater, nonprofit theaters, professional opportunities for the artists who live here, not just the artists who temporarily locate here to perform on the strip. Another long-term goal would be developing a cultural trust for the city, so that we have a trust fund that we can pull from every year to grant out into the community to support emerging and established artists, as well as really looking at developing a public art program that embeds public art. Thank you. This is Ally Haynes-Hamblin, the Director of Cultural Affairs. I'm sorry, I forgot to introduce myself. Appreciate that. But really looking at how to embed our public art program throughout the infrastructure of the city. So not just necessarily putting out sculptures on street corners or painting murals on walls, but thinking about how we're designing our public benches, thinking about how we're designing the shade structures, utilizing artists and public artists to help develop the infrastructure that we're already including in our complete streets projects and in our new park plans. How can we have an artist design a playground instead of just purchasing playground equipment from a factory? That sort of thing. As well as using art for economic and urban revitalization. We've been part of the Hundred Plan discussions and really talking about how we can use all of our resources from public art to performing arts to visual arts to really help revitalize the historic West Side, and that's something that we can apply throughout the city. Also, one of our long-term goals is really looking at creating a world-class trade school network in Las Vegas. This is the entertainment capital of the world. There are thousands and thousands and thousands of creative professionals employed here, but there is not an infrastructure in place to train the next generation of people who are operating the sound equipment, the rigging equipment, the lighting equipment, the new technologies that have yet to be invented. All of that should be housed right here in Las Vegas. So people move here, children grow up here, and they learn, "This can be a viable career for me. I can make a solid living working as a sound engineer, as a recording engineer, as a rigger in a theater, not just as a performer."
That could integrate also into the educational component as well.
Exactly. Exactly. That's really the overarching umbrella for me for the goals for Cultural Affairs long-term, is really looking at how the arts and culture impact every aspect of our lives: workforce development, temporary housing, economic revitalization, all of it. Arts can be a part of everything.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Very helpful, and I think, Mr. Knutson, that could be definitely a part of that larger workforce development as well, too.
So we actually was checking with the city manager while Ally was presenting. That, from his standpoint, would by itself be a completely legitimate and useful strategic priority, right? If you said to him, "Arts and culture go big," that's incredibly important. You did get a sense of what then would be brought back to you to approve, but that by itself is a strategic priority. He also, and what we were curious about is, is that part of parks, parks and public spaces is recreation? And he actually said, "No." He thought that they sort of stood sufficiently separately. So then we've got a seventh strategic priority, which you think is useful. That is useful, do you? If you said, "Parks and open and public spaces, find ways with vigor. Go search for ways to deliver more, because we're behind," right? If you said that, "Go be excellent over the next four to five years," he says, "That's useful." Me and the team will get it done for you. We'll come back with ideas. So that then, if you agree, then that would be its own number seven, and then we've got arts and culture, its own number eight.
Goodman here, that does integrate the neon, because that is an art form. And as we're doing it down our medians, as we improve our public right-of-ways, I mean, there's so much that's already integrated, so it just probably should stay there somehow.
Councilwoman Diaz, and I want to just echo the mayor that there are so many ways that we can expand the presence of art in our communities, and I think it's a great tool to combat graffiti, for instance, in places that it's pervasive. And it would probably be cost-saving to us to make sure that we're looking at our traffic boxes that are severely tagged every so often and try to come up with creative ways and good art to put up there. One, you're remediating that eyesore, but two, you might be avoiding it to be tagged consistently. So I think that there's a dual purpose, and I think that we shouldn't lose sight of when we're doing our public roadways again, making sure we're incorporating artistic elements and components. And the talk about equity across the entire city is super important, just to make sure that we're doing it everywhere is super important. And then I want to speak to the parks and recreation. I think that it's, I think it's an immediate way to start building the community and the sense of community and making sure that we're bringing programming that fits the needs of the community around that center, and not doing a cookie-cutter approach, but really seeing what do Councilman Knutson's residents want out of his community centers, what do Councilman Creer's constituency need, and what do mine, and what do Councilman Siemens? I think that we're not necessarily all the same, and just being really creative and unique and making sure that we're employing best practices in those spaces. And I think that then we'll see more people coming to seek services, giving us recommendations, and then we can probably get more citizen participation in our different centers.
Beautiful. Part of why I heard the city manager observe to one of you right before the break, I just want to say to all of you, because I thought it was really important. Every single department head is in the room today, every single one. And part of why that is the case is that the city manager really wanted his leadership team to hear it directly from you. It is immensely valuable when you're the one trying to implement intention. Like, if my job is to take action on your intention, the more I understand about something as amorphous as intention, the better equipped I am, right? And so this kind of, just the sharing that you've all been doing is incredibly rich for a whole bunch of reasons, not the least of which is how useful it is to those that are going to then take action on your intention. So I just want to say thanks. Okay, are there any others? Any more than eight? Yes.
Goodman, again, looking at how these are numbered, they are numbered as how they came to you as a suggestion, correct?
Correct. There is absolutely nothing.
They're not, because I see with public safety, number six. To me, that needs...
You're going to prescribe prioritization, because only leaders can do that. All I'm doing is listing.
Thank you.
Okay. Any others?
I just wanted to say that housing, I don't know where that belongs, if it belongs at all. I just think it's a topic that I don't completely understand within the state of Nevada.
It's a separate one.
Could be. I mean...
Maximized real estate?
I don't understand it well enough. In our state of, I don't know.
Scott Adams, at the end of the day, all these have some level of overlap with others. My gut would tell me it's its own category, but that you're the one setting, you're the one doing this, that's a big, big area. I mean, that encompasses affordable housing, it ties to homelessness. I mean, there's a whole chunk of affordable housing that isn't homelessness. And so there's...
There's also mid-level housing. I think about preserving our, that was the comment made, preserving our quality of life, preserving our neighborhoods that we have now while still knowing that there's another 500,000 people that will move in. And where are they going to go if we go up? What does the infill development look like? Are we creating enough housing for the types of people that are coming in? I don't, that has everything to do with land use. I don't know much about housing, but I am anxious about it because, like Councilman Creer said, we're going to have, if we go up, we're going to go in Ward 1, 3, and 5, and it's right next to longstanding developments that have been there for a very long time. And how do we make sure that the housing mix is right for the population that we have? I don't know the answer to that.
So we're going to leave it up, because it is a completely legitimate strategic priority for a collective of leaders to say, "This matters a lot to us, so go work on it with some vigor and focus over the next four to five years," right? That would be essentially, let me just play back, the direction to use, Scott, would be the next five years, we've got to make some significant progress in the available inventories of housing.
And what would be helpful is to know, as the leaders of the wards, what is available to our constituency, because sometimes we might have more apartments in one ward versus townhomes and homes for them to transition. And I think that that lends itself to quality of life, right? I don't necessarily, maybe I need to because my... I don't necessarily, maybe I need to because my economy only allows me to rent this apartment right now, but it doesn't mean I have to do it till I die. So what is the mobility for me in terms of housing as a resident of the City of Las Vegas? And can I keep being a resident of the City of Las Vegas because I have those options? And so I just think knowing our housing stock, and that could also help inform decisions down the road. So when we have development projects coming before us and they want to do more studios, but we know that the need is more townhomes and two-story, not two-story, but family bedrooms, apartments with two rooms or three rooms, because everybody wants to do the minimalist style, but we have to make sure that we're not missing someone out of the equation.
Yep. That is a sufficiently significant and important strategic priority that would be...
And I think that ties into Mayor Protem's theory about maybe looking at annexation, because you can't put everything in your ward.
Sure. Great. So thank you for that. Anything else? Do we want to get to double digits? We can, there's no toaster that you win if we get there, right?
One of the areas is sustainability as a city, which I think we need to discuss. And I think one of the subject matters should be transportation as well.
Great. Sustainability?
Transportation infrastructure, which we had in our list.
And then transportation infrastructure. And then talk some more about sustainability. What might that look like as a strategic priority? What would be...
And you have that up there as well with the environment on that first list.
On your 2030, on your 2050, it is definitely part of your 2050 vision. No, yeah, transportation is its own, right.
Sustainability and the environment.
Tell me about it.
Sustainability and the environment are together.
Right.
And what do we mean as a strategic priority for the next five years? What do we want to do with excellence relative to sustainability and environment over the next five years?
It could mean, I just learned yesterday that there might be incentives out there that if someone is looking to renovate a property and they really implement energy-efficient renovations to their property, that there might be funds available for them to do all of the retrofits. Or if there's incentives for solar energy, I think we need to be thinking, as we hear about Tesla, as we hear battery, as we hear more of the, I think that also means energy alternatives, right? And so how can we be maybe incentivizing the utilization of such? And then water conservation, I know, was a big one, but maybe we just need to give more information out to the public, because I think a lot of our water is being recycled and we do a pretty good job, but maybe we need a forecast out and get an update from the Water Authority as well.
Not to put them on the spot, but the city does have a Chief Sustainability Officer, and that is Tom Perigo. And we have been running a course on a range of initiatives that are tied to sustainability, so it might be worth one or two minutes of Tom just kind of capsulizing what we've been doing. And is that something you want to see us move, continue to move forward with?
So I, Michelle Fiori, Mayor Protem. So Michael Sherwood and I, in my office, without my other council members, you know, because of that role, we are literally looking and working on net zero, which is sustainability. It's basically looking at housing and to where it's all wrapped up in one, whether water, the electric. And as we discuss these things, and of course, we'll have to get our community partners on board, Nevada Energy, the City of Las Vegas Valley Water District, and all of that. So sustainability, as we look to grow our city and be, so it's very important that we do that. And so I think as Tom comes and talks, you know, we'll also look at net zero as well.
As part of this, yeah.
For the record, Tom Perigo, Chief, I don't mind, I'm not a chief.
Sustainability Officer. You are now.
I just gave myself a promotion.
Congratulations. Let's honor Tom's promotion. Well deserved, we say.
These aren't the chiefs. I'm the Executive Director of Community Development and the Chief Sustainability Officer, so...
So got you.
Yeah. Too much time in the mountains. So we've been at this since 2004, I want to say, when former Mayor Oscar Goodman signed the U.S. Conference of Mayors Climate Protection Agreement, one of the first of like 20 mayors in the country to sign it. Now practically every mayor has signed on to that. And that committed us to reducing our greenhouse gas emissions to a level that we haven't seen since 1990 as a result of all of our investments. We are now at a level of emissions as a corporate entity what we were at about 1950. And that's because we are very strategic investing in renewable energy, energy conservation, water conservation, recycling, and we've been tremendously successful. We're spending a lot less on all of that stuff today than we were five, 10 years ago when we started all of this. So we've been incredibly successful as a corporate entity addressing environmental sustainability. Now, we're really trying to push that out into the community as this discussion is sort of taking hold and talking about what can we do to encourage that same sort of action out in the community with businesses, with residences, and so on, working with our utilities. They all have wonderful programs and helping to push those out. But we're starting to transition a little bit. Oh, one other thing, too, we've partnered with the resort industry and a lot of the major employers in our community over the last 10 years to make sure that we're all doing what we can to make our entire community a very environmentally sustainable community. And again, it's not just the city, it's the other local governments, it's the resort industry is a world leader when it comes to this kind of stuff. So we've had a lot of success. We're sort of transitioning into that question of community sustainability by really framing it as community resilience. What can we do to make sure that we can continue to sustain ourselves into the future, have a great quality of life, a prosperous community, given our resource constraints and challenges in the future? And what kinds of things might happen? What sorts of shocks? What vulnerabilities do we have that we need to be thinking about as we plan for the future? A lot of what you're starting to talk about now and what I'm talking about is baked into the work that the planning's doing and really all of the city's doing on the 2050 Master Plan. It's really cognizant of those questions of vulnerability, shocks to our systems, and how do we create a resilient community through land use, infrastructure, and so on. So that's kind of where we're headed. We're also working with UNLV, looking at these things, because it's not just the environmental stuff, but it's also, you know, community things. And basically, everything on that list is what we need to do in order to create a community that's resilient and that's prosperous going forward. So we do have a great history. We're recognized around the world. We've won many, many awards, and it's all the work that everybody in this city has done. I've just been fortunate and blessed to be part of it. But we have really made a name. When you talk about sustainability out in the world, people know Las Vegas is really an icon when it comes to that.
No wonder he's the chief boss.
Tom, can you just add that actor, The Pirates of the Caribbean? What's his name?
Oh...
Yeah, Johnny Depp mentioned, Mayor Carolyn Goodman in Paris. Remember that?
It wasn't Johnny Depp, it was Leonardo DiCaprio.
Right, right, right. I'm sorry, they're all the same.
Yeah, the mayor and I were supposed to go to the global climate talks in Paris.
Mentioned your name.
And because of things that were happening at that time, we decided not to go. But at that meeting of all the world's leaders, the mayor of Paris convened all of the major cities around the world to have a conference on climate change and sustainability at the same time. And the keynote was Leonardo DiCaprio. He called out the City of Las Vegas. I got texted like in the middle of the night from a friend who was there. So Leonardo DiCaprio just called out the City of Las Vegas as a global leader in sustainability and renewable energy. So I mean, I don't know that Leonardo DiCaprio is any expert in sustainability, but I mean, he's...
He is now. He is now.
He's known, and I mean, you know, so...
Thank you.
I would like to add, for the, I think this is relevant to what the mayor started off with, is what can we fiscally afford, which is also part of sustainability. And I learned that every day because I carpooled with Tom Perigo for two years. He never gave me a dollar, not $1 for carpoolsing. He knows how to be fiscally prudent. So I think it's important that we include that in sustainability as being fiscally responsible, because that's how Tom does it.
The, so what we've just heard is, that's going to happen anyway.
Yeah.
It's a different discussion today. The question for you is, as a collective of seven, ultimately, we're going to get down to just a few strategic priorities. Do you want a bigger bet placed? Is that one of the priorities? Yes or no? Because that's what will keep you on this list or not. We already know what's going to happen, right?
Yeah, but you've got to put money into it, and you've got to focus on it.
Well, Tom's going to do his best, like he's been doing at...
Just where does it go in the priorities?
Well, so the question for you is, is it for the seven of you in this moment, potentially one of the things that you're going to want to make a bigger, more intense focus on?
Could it go under the part of the vice funding economy?
You could. You could put it anywhere you want, because it's your list. Or we could say, "We are so proud and pleased with how it's doing, let's just let Tom keep doing what Tom and the team are doing."
We want him to keep his job.
We do. He's just been promoted, so. So it is completely possible. I mean, it's a legitimate option, is leaders to say, "We are so honored and grateful that the plan is so brilliant, that we're doing it at a very high level, we're just going to continue to have the mayor's name roll off the lips of highly expert sustainability people like Leo DiCaprio, that we just keep going."
Oh, gosh.
Right? And separate from that, to a staff of 3,600, here are the three, four, five priorities that we really want you to focus on. So they don't need to be on the list.
And certainly, I would think that's part of our EUD team, that they have to focus heavily on sustainability and climate control and environmental issues as we get developers coming into the community to help us build the housing and everything else. And then, do we like the VIP and the, what was the other one? The smart, the other 50,000 that we had through EUD to bring buildings up to code? There was another incentive that we had.
Downtown Business Assistance Program.
What was it called?
Downtown Business Assistance Program.
D cap. Downtown Business...
There was the VIP and another one, and then we took out something. But it, what is it built? The other, the other program beside the VIP that you now do internally?
I don't think he knows what we're talking about.
He will. Something with an S. It was...
Good afternoon. Bill Arntz, Economic and Urban Development. We have a number of incentive programs, commercial visual improvement, we have a multifamily visual improvement, we have the Downtown Business Assistance Program that helps the inside of the building, we have an office incentive, we have a medical district incentive. And then, specific to sustainability, I attended a workshop with someone on Tom's team, Marco Verlata, Commercial Pace Financing, and I think Councilwoman Diaz was there also. There are a lot of new incentives, and it, businesses recognize that smart business is investing in sustainability, so there are a number of new options and tools that we can...
That are financial in allocation, correct?
Yes.
Right. Thank you, thank you.
Sure.
I would offer, I think because of the work of Mr. Perigo, that this is embedded in the culture of the city.
It is. That's what I was just going to say.
And I think it's a source of pride for me because I grew up in it, and so it's how I think about everything now. And I think that's true of most everybody in the city.
And you've already claimed gold standard. I mean, when the 2050 claim was to be number one, you're already top-tier in this one. You've established that, been recognized for it, promoted the guy in charge of it. Trying, I'm trying. It's not looking good. And so unless there's some explicit, go to the next level in the next five years, the message that you want to deliver to Tom, my suggestion would be that this doesn't belong on this list. It is what you do, you're doing it at a very high level, but it isn't...
It's part of our DNA.
It's part of our DNA, that unless you want to lift it up specifically as a significantly focused-on priority, it doesn't sound like it is, because he's already doing it. Do you, do we agree?
Yes.
Okay, then take it up. And then we've got transportation. Talk about what that means as a strategic pillar, priority. One of you offered it.
Well, I think for transportation, I mean, if you look at any major metropolitan city, then there are multiple means of ways to get around a community. And then with the environment, the way it is, the amount of traffic, trying to get less people out of cars and into alternative means of transportation, whether that is rail, whether that is biking, above-ground rail, below-ground rail, more robust transit system with RTC, I think we have to take that into consideration. Then with the new means of people commuting, with the transportation networking companies, Ubers and the Lifts, I think that's got to be all taken into consideration as a city.
Useful as a strategic priority. It would definitely be. So if you said, really come up with solutions to expand the transportation offerings for residents of the City of Las Vegas?
Yeah, I mean, it has to also.
The next five years.
And also, as the community moves further out towards, you know, out in Ward 6, it keeps expanding out, how do we get people, how do they get into the core of the city to come down to City Hall to do business outside of hopping in cars and coming in?
Ride a horse.
Ride a horse.
Ride a horse, save a cowboy.
Yeah, I think it's got to be. And then also with the expansion of, if you look at a regional perspective, Las Vegas has to be part of the conversation for that as well.
So that would be, if you hear that, then it would be useful as a strategic direction. Okay.
That would resonate with me and what the citizens' priority was, and I want to bring it up, that war on poverty, transit and transportation options is one of the greatest things you can do on that war on poverty.
Yeah. And talk about what it means to have access. If I can't get there, I got no access, doesn't matter what it is.
And also to remember that the scope of transportation is not just within our city, the confines of our city boundaries, but a lot of people might work in another municipality or another jurisdiction. So they might be going to Henderson, they might be going to North Las Vegas. We, you know, they may live here, but that doesn't necessarily mean that they work here too. So we need to make sure that there's good transportation options that connect our city around.
Priority for us, and we put money towards it and effort.
So you've got 10 strategic priorities without it.
Well, I'm not saying how they're prioritized, though, just so it's included.
Well, and when we prioritize, the next step is to actually lift up, because it is simply not possible, based on any laws of physics, that anyone, no matter how motivated they are, can do simultaneously 10 things with excellence.
Except what you have proven to us already this morning, that we can combine things. And so maybe there's an area where we can...
If it fits, yeah.
As we look at it and it's prioritized by the council, then we can see, and if it drops off at the bottom, maybe something else will be at the bottom. I just think that...
Well, if you end up with three to five priorities, by necessity, five to seven of this list are going to drop off.
Right.
Which is not to say, so when I declare the things that are really important as a leader, I am not saying therefore nothing else is. What I am saying is, be evergreen and solid and keep delivering as you've always done, and go after these with excellence.
Yes.
Right? So they're both true.
But if, in fact, the media should decide to look beyond that this was a consideration.
Well, and we promote the guy in charge. We promote the guy in charge in real time.
I also fired somebody last night.
Oh.
Mike Jansen. Of course, I hired him back immediately. And Councilwoman Diaz can attest to that.
And Mr. Jensen, I said I'd pick you up in a heartbeat. If she fired you, I would hire you right back, so don't worry.
Well, you're having a good day, huh? Okay.
I think from a strategic planning perspective, there's value in saying that we have a set number of priorities, there's a finite number of resources, and a finite amount of time to think about anything. But if you embed the way we approach all of our priorities, have sustainability in mind, there's a way to say that, I think, to make sure the word is part of there. For example, in transportation, light rail could come into the conversation, and that's also environmentally appropriate.
Right.
Good, good. So that's great direction.
Challenge.
We're going to weave, it is part, it's what you said at the beginning, which is it's part of our DNA. Okay, then transportation is our number 10. Do we have any other, are there any other potential strategic priorities that if we, that we want to include on that list? Things that we can be, go after with excellence the next four to five years to remain on a glide path to 2050? Going once, going twice, gone. Okay. So we've got 10, and look how far ahead she is. Where's... Where's the one, oh, there we go. So you see, all of the words are there, right? So that hopefully can anchor you right back to the conversation. We have summarized them down to one or two words. Consider this like a series of labels. So diversify economy includes everything you talked about in here. Right? And so on. So the second one that you see is maximize real estate. That's everything that we talked about in here. Existing assets, annexation, existing new zoning, licensing, big box, all of that conversation. That's what we mean. Third one is homelessness. And that is essentially what we're saying is, city manager, please put something together so that in the next four to five years, we can really be excellent at increasing mitigation and addressing homelessness. Right? Make sense? Number four is healthcare, which is everything that we talked about, expanding access, max, or utilizing conditions to accelerate when possible, cultivating an environment where we can even accelerate it further, being really data-driven about the whole thing. But let's go after it and let's go, let's go hard so that we can win big. So that's healthcare. The next one, number five, is education. Now, this is the one where education is now bannered with, we mean really workforce education, specifically healthcare field and high needs fields. And then we would contemplate systemic solutions that would run pre-K to 16. Okay. So that's number six, or that's number five. Number six is public safety. That's this. We are really good in our, based on what Jeremy told us, citizens feel pretty darn safe, good, and over the next four to five years, let's be excellent at being preemptive to prevent in the broadest sense, right? Police, fire corrections, courts, decrease crime, increase the quality of life. So that's what we mean by, and that's residential, commercial, and in open and public spaces. So that's what we mean by public safety. Number seven, parks and open spaces, is the conversation that we had where, oh, to have more of them. So you're going to say, come on, we're behind the national curve in number of park offerings per citizen. Step it up. Go after it with vigor in the next four to five years. Right? And then finally, arts and, or not finally, right, but arts and culture is next. And that was what we heard would be to just sort of go faster on existing plans, double down, octane, energize them to deliver more quickly. Okay? Housing mix, we just had this conversation, so I don't need to repeat it because you just had it, right? Let's get more inventory capital or lowercase i, so that it's to increase the offerings. And then finally, transportation, which is what we just think, let's pursue vigorously expanding the transportation options either for today or for the future. So those are 10, right? That kind of gets a little glazy over because it's super complicated stuff. And it is not possible to be excellent at all of these things simultaneously. So now, in front of you, does anyone have any questions about these 10? Or comments? Are these 10 true for you? It's a yes or no question.
Yes, but I do want to make a comment.
Okay.
Dealing with homelessness encompasses mental health care and diversifying the economy. Those kind of, to me, go together. You can't just take homelessness and leave out some of the other two.
So you hear from the overlay, because you're right, you're absolutely right. And I think all of these flange and touch each other.
Right.
Right? So there's nothing that's going to be completely by itself. I think from the city manager's perspective, he's got departments and teams constructed. And so if you say to him, please solve for homelessness, healthcare, and mental health, that's, he's got teams that would work. So he would say that's probably three strategic priorities.
Is it three?
And they may overlap.
Well, I think Scott Adams, I think what I said earlier is they tend to overlap. For example, homelessness involves housing, it involves healthcare, mental health in particular, and involves employment opportunities. Because a lot of the folks that are homeless lost their jobs. So it, they're, I think what, if you say homelessness, we're going to look at where all those factors that go into that, that, those will be part of the strategies.
Because to go after it with excellence will demand that.
So it can be one category, basically, or not.
Yep.
The alternative would be is you look at healthcare, housing, workforce, and as you approach it, you approach it from all ends of the spectrum, from people who recently lost jobs and are homeless to diversifying the economy. So there's two approaches. I don't know which is best.
Okay. You going to say something?
Michelle Fiori. So I agree, and as Councilman Knudsen had said, with homelessness, it really encompasses everything from jobs to housing to healthcare, which is mental health care, to educating them, because sometimes they're going to need job training, to public safety. And when I think of public safety and homelessness, because homelessness, you know, as we toured a couple of different places around this country on how they deal with homelessness, you've got to be very cautious on where you're housing homeless people, like a wet and a dry area, especially if the homeless individual is intoxicated and there's children that are homeless. So, I mean, it's really, it's all encompassing, but I think going forth, we look at each of these divisions as, you know, homelessness is going to need transportation, they're going to need.
They all overlap. So this is not to suggest at any level that they're, that they do not touch and should not touch. And the reason that I've been doing the reality check with the city manager is that at the end of the day, leadership direction needs to be useful to those who are relying on it, right? So I've been saying to him, is this useful as a strategic pillar? And when he says yes, we believe him, right? So that's what he said. So we've got 10. Now, here's what I want you to do. In front of you, you've got three stars. They're post-it notes, but they're stars, star-shaped. I want you to pull them up. So here are your three stars. You've got three stars. Here's yours, where's yours?
I'm over four stars, five stars.
On one of them.
What are we doing?
Pull them apart and put three side by side. You've got stars. Three stars side by side. In the middle of one of the stars, fairly large, write the number one. In the middle of a second star, fairly large, write the number two. In the middle of the third star, yep, you already figured it out, write fairly large the number three. Then I want you to look up at those 10. Those are the 10 strategic priorities that all of you have agreed and articulated in response to the question, if we do a few things with excellence in the next four to five years, we'll be on the glide path to our vision for 2020. Those are.
Wait, most important, we need a star, one more star.
We're losing a star?
More important than anything to have enough stars.
We've got to have enough stars.
Oh, he found it.
Oh, they were stuck together. Okay.
Emergency over.
Glad that's, glad we landed that plane. That was kind of, so, those are the 10. And now what's important is to get the clarity from the leadership team of seven. So here's what I'm going to ask you to do. Of those 10, the one that for you personally is the most important, I know, it's not easy to be a leader, that's why you get like the microphones and nameplates. The one that for you is the most important, you're going to walk over to that item and you're going to push your number three star next to it. Okay? Because three is, because I, it's like a vote. I'm putting weight on this because it's my number one priority. The item on that list that would be your second highest priority earns your star with the number two. And your third priority earns, place next to that, the star with the number one.
Okay, so your first priority.
First priority gets us three. Yeah. Foxy-moronic. Go backwards. Yeah. So.
Yeah.
Your first choice gets the number three. It's about voting.
Oh, so the one is my first priority?
Is number three.
No. You put the number three next to your highest priority.
This is a political caucus.
It's, I don't really like that.
Is your first priority?
First priority.
Correct. Next to your highest priority, place the number three. Bring in every moment of your life experience, everything that you've ever discovered or learned while on the job, every conversation that you've had. The thing that for you is the most important gets the number three. The thing that's the second most important gets the number two. And for you, the third priority earns the number one.
It is interesting. It's like a, that's weird.
Public safety.
Well, actually, public safety, you can't do anything if you're not safe. Don't be moving tickets around for your.
So I want you to notice two things. There are seven of us, seven of you in this moment, as stewards of this community. And so wherever you see stars, it means we are of one mind. And then as human beings, there's certain things that we care more deeply about, frankly, than we do other things. And that's just the way we work. And so let's not abandon that fundamental human trait when we're talking about something as serious as leading the future of a community.
And my one word up front was unity.
That's right. That's right. So I'm now going to do some math, right? So in education, we've got six. There's two that say three. Public safety, three, five, one, two, three.
Oh, but mine are all off. I just put my star in the right place. I didn't put the right numbers. Because I'd already done one, two, and three. I'll go change the number.
Yeah, you've got to change it. It's going to mess up our math.
Did we do that?
No. What her orders were.
The only one that came out the same was Malcolm Bear, and he had that number two. Excuse me.
So your highest priority.
This was, he said the number three, give it a three.
He's your highest priority.
Our number one priority is a three.
This one.
Your second choice?
No, this one.
Third choice.
My highest priority is our cops.
That gets the number one.
Oh, it was number one.
Our highest priority.
That's right.
Is our po-po.
So that's one.
This one ended up two, no matter what.
So that is two. Okay. So redo. So just as you're thinking it through, so everyone.
What's that number, four?
That's the number four. So everyone did place next to their highest priority, their top priority, the number three star. Their second highest priority earned the number two star. Their third highest priority earned the number one star. Everyone did that?
Yeah.
You didn't double dip or double star?
No.
Just checking, okay?
That's funny.
So public safety, we've got, what's that?
I said integrity. Whose word was that?
I believe you. All through six. Nine, 12, 15. Parks and open spaces, it's a two.
Was that you? I know it. No, 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 that was your big thing last time, too.
Two, four, six, eight. Two, three, oops, and nine. Okay. So notice what you've got, right? So what do you see as you look at this?
Priorities.
Yeah. And what are the priorities that you see?
The numbers.
What are they?
Police.
Public safety.
Public safety.
First one is public safety. Second one is what?
Healthcare.
Healthcare. Third is what?
Diversifying economy.
Diversifying economy.
And then, everything kind of comes, like there's a big break, right? So one option for leaders, it's your truth, so whatever it is true for you, you can absolutely say, we've got three. City manager, there's three big ones. Public safety, diversification of the economy, and healthcare. Go hard on those. In 2013, we had four priorities. In 2017, we had six priorities. This moment with the seven of us, in 2020, we want you to go hard on three. You could absolutely say that. Or you could say, you know what? Add in education. When you could pick where you want to cut that list off, right?
What's the number on education you have there?
Education's a four.
Okay.
So with education, it's very difficult, in just my opinion, for it to be the council's priority because it's a state party. Now, the council, as council members, could urge our friends who are state-elected to make that a state priority. But are, you know, the three?
Let me make a suggestion. Let me make a suggestion. You've got three priorities as a group of seven, right? Here's what I see. There are three heads and shoulders above the other seven.
Yep.
Right? And so if that, if that is what it is, then let's allow it to be what it is.
Perfect.
Okay. We don't necessarily need to overthink it or overcomplicate it because sometimes it's, like, it's okay, it is what it is, right? And so if, and then I would say to the city manager, who ultimately, this entire exercise is to get your clarity maximally useful for him so he can conduct 3,600 people, if they said, if your leader said, public safety, healthcare, diversification of economy, does that give you what you need?
Well, I think the one thing that, when I look at the clustering of the stars, those are also the three where a majority or greater of the council said it was a priority. Because I think there's a, that's the other break. If you, if you look at it on all the others, there was less than a majority of councils that said it was important to them.
So four wins all the time. The number four wins all the time.
In those three, four or more of you said it's the most important thing.
I think there's, from, from your perspective, I hope I would look at those top three, and knowing that the others, although they don't have stars in them, that there's a way to incorporate those into the top three as well. So as you're talking about maximizing real estate, there's a way to talk about parks and open spaces, and arts and culture, and housing. And so it's just embedded in the way you think about the top three priorities, that even though there's not a count of four on the rest of them, that they're an important conversation in how you go about the top three.
Yep. And another way, how to describe this, yes, I mean, the sustainability was one great example that we talked about earlier, where sustainability could be a consideration. How do we advance our sustainability commitments in whatever we're talking about doing, right?
And without question, homelessness is part of public safety. There's just no question.
Of course, it will be.
That doesn't stand alone.
And that's still different.
Paramount, public safety.
That's still different than declaring public safety as the priority and when, in the course of achieving excellence on public safety, when we can also achieve sustainability, good for us. When we can also achieve progress on homelessness, good for us. That's very different than saying, pursue homelessness, solve for it, right? It's a different clarity.
But I would, I would admit it would be important, though, to hear from council that as a consensus, homelessness is a consensus part of public safety. Because we're spending a lot of resource.
I realize, I think it's, I think it's very telling, very surprising that I'm the only person that voted for homelessness.
Now, if I thought about it, Councilman, absolutely, I would almost put that as the priority with you. It's part of healthcare and it's part of public safety. It really doesn't.
Well, I think that, I don't know. I see it a little differently. And I think that homelessness is not only a priority, I think it's a capital letter priority with capital H all the way through personally. And I think that everything falls, sure, it falls under public safety, but, you know, public safety also includes detention center, marshals, you know, some other factors. I think homelessness is its own category within itself. And I said it a while back, and I'll say it again, if we don't recognize it and go to death count 10 and recognize it as its own subject matter, then capital letters, then we're, we continue to sort of go from where we are.
And if we go forward in improving access to healthcare, that means all segments of our population. Without actually targeting any one of our segments of our population, I feel that there's a challenge from a city perspective in focusing all of our efforts on one segment of our population, because then we forget the rest of the population that also needs access to services.
I think that's a valid statement. Yet, whether we want to segment it out as a separate population or not, it is what it is, right? And we've got 6,000 street homeless. We have it up and down our streets, up and down Fremont Street, up and down our tourist corridor. So I get what you're saying, but I think it has to be... Personally, I think, because it's so important, and it carries such heavy weight, that it should be segmented out. But I get... I think maybe we're all on the same page, and maybe saying it differently.
Yes, I think you're right. I think without question, when I put that first star up, public safety in my brain was homelessness, to the point that I didn't even see homelessness separately. I saw it as part of public safety, which in my mind, it is. I would have taken my vote off of education, which is fundamental to everything, because if everybody were equitably educated, they would make good choices, and they wouldn't be homeless, except for those who can't take care of themselves, because they're totally mentally ill or so drug addicted. So to me, homelessness is absolutely fundamental to public safety, and I agree with you.
And I still believe that when we work on public safety, diversify the economy, and especially healthcare, mental healthcare, we will be...
That's part of it.
...tackling homelessness. Because it is, I think, number one on all of our minds. But we want to get to some of the source in trying to help by doing some things. We have the corridor, but I think trying to work on it on another angle will be beneficial for the city.
Well, we've been working for the past at least five years on trying to get the Gene Prison dedicated to the sanitarium care health facility for those severely mentally ill that can't take care of themselves, which we will continue to do, because it is so critical to the good health of the community. So it's just an explanation to Councilman Career. I could move off of education, give you another star.
No, it's okay.
But if you put your homeless under public safety, I would really be happy.
Our heart is with you.
Yes.
I'm sticking with homelessness.
So here's... This is rich conversation, so thank you for having us. It's so useful to hear. So on behalf of the 3,600 of us that are on staff, I'm not one of them, but I'm using the weak, on our behalf, the crispness of the clarity matters, right? So you have declared three priorities: public safety, and you'll see them up there now, public safety, healthcare, and diversify the economy. And what it does not say, Councilman Career, is homelessness. And so part of committing and being a collective as a leadership team is we gotta support what we come up with, right? Because otherwise, it gets really difficult for staff, who's looking for the clarity of the direction. Now, having said that, your city manager and 20 department heads have been listening really carefully, and there isn't a human being that has not yet figured out, in this room or in this community, that homelessness matters a lot. And so what he said is, we're gonna find ways, as we develop the strategy and go to the next level, we hear the priority that is shared and important to everybody, and we will bring back something that shows you that we're hearing it, right? And so it isn't up there, like the specific priority. Homelessness is not up there. And he is committing that he's heard it, and then it'll be woven in. He actually thinks, as I think you said it too, that it's really a key part of the public safety discussion.
And healthcare.
And healthcare, that's right.
Definitely is a component of healthcare.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll give you another example. Healthcare, you've made healthcare one of your highest priorities. You really can't expand our healthcare industry without working on workforce development and education.
Right, there's other...
In fact, it's a critical factor to expanding the healthcare base, making sure we have plenty of folks that can work in allied health professions. So you can't work on expansion of healthcare without working in some other areas. And maximizing real estate's one of them, because we've had that conversation about medical district. We are gonna have to figure out how to maximize real estate in the medical district to expand it.
Well, and to then, we always come back to the fact, we have the partnership with the county and the university. I mean, you just keep adding these tentacles, and it goes on forever.
And it does go on forever. So what I want you to do now is look up at first 2050. And here's what you saw earlier today, when you talked about your vision for 2050. And then, look up literally to the three priorities that then become the answer to the question, what are the things that if we do with excellence in the next three to five years, place us on a glide path to getting here? So that's the reality check, right? That's the reality check. And what this... That's what you said...
Literally, the first, we had safety, healthcare, and business climate. Safety, healthcare, diversified economy.
There you go. Okay. Well, that was elegant, what you just did. And then now, on behalf of the city manager and the staff, it is important when leaders are... Look at me in the eye and say, this is what I believe, and I will have your back. Because the alternative is when I don't hear that from a leader, they're holding open the opportunity that they may run over me at some point, right? Or direct me in a different direction. The highest respect that you can pay your city manager and a really motivated world-class staff is to look them straight in the eye and say, this is what I believe, and I've got your back. And then support each other in having back, because that's what great leaders do, so that he can literally get the 36-member orchestra, playing in a way that I have zero doubt in my mind, is gonna allow us to claim, probably much earlier than 2050, the world's number one community. And so I am gonna ask you now to look in the eye, the folks in this room, and then beyond them, 3,600, and like, say to them, this is what I believe.
Specifically, what is it that you're saying, that we believe that these are the three priorities?
That these are our collective priorities out of the seven of us.
So what if you don't agree with it? I think homelessness should be one of them. I understand the rationale.
Yeah, and it's not.
I understand.
And so we've gone through process. So this is a time when leaders gotta sort it out, because it can't be ours...
You don't always vote... It's not always seven to zero votes, by the way.
Leadership clarity is not a vote.
I'm just saying that we respectfully... Well, I can respectfully not agree with my colleagues and have the utmost respect for them, is what I'm saying.
Completely, completely. Different conversation today. This is not a vote, and there's no... It's not a win or loss. It is a desire to provide pristine clarity that will then cascade down through an organization.
Maybe vote is... It maybe votes the wrong terminology, because we are not voting.
Right.
We are not... There's no right or wrong. I think everyone's on the same page. I just personally do not believe that these are the... I would put homelessness as one of those three. So I cannot, in good consciousness, say, yes, I'm on board with these three, because I don't think that they should be one of these three. I think one is missing. So... And there's nothing wrong with that, right? I don't think there's anything wrong. I think everyone's on the same page. It's just that I think that homelessness should be one, two, three.
So let me ask you slightly differently. Recognizing, because we've had good discussion, and you've got now on the record, homelessness matters a lot to all of you. And when offered an opportunity for seven to place it as one of the top priorities, it was not one.
That's great, that's fine. I'm not saying that it's not.
So as a consensus, these are the three, that through a process of consensus, emerge as the shared consensus. The question is, can we all support this consensus?
I will support it. So yeah, without a doubt.
Which is what the...
I support the majority of the will of the council, by all means. Even if I didn't vote for it, I still... It is what it is, so we have to move forward and support it.
Great, because that's what the team is looking for.
So what were the words again? I will, I do, can you do it now, I support you, chop, chop?
And I got your back.
And I got your back. I got your back. I've got your six.
This is what we believe, right? This is what we believe, and I've got your back. Because they're gonna come back to you now with ideas on how to achieve these things.
You know, something, I just have to... I'm very disturbed by this, though, because I really, today, do believe it's one of, personally, my priorities. We do not want to be LA. We do not want to be exposed to the sanitation issues that are at our door. We cannot handle, in the city of Las Vegas, the entire and growing homeless issue that's gonna keep making it impossible to operate downtown. And it is, in my mind, with... Because I didn't look at your separate issue, which I appreciate, it was my vote for public safety. And if anybody'd asked me today, tomorrow, until it's fixed, or moving along, what's your priority? I would say homelessness. And so to me, it's more important to me to fix homelessness and get these people back into a life or in a physical place of safety and off the streets, more important than diversifying our economy. And I don't mean to create it, and obviously, the majority rules here, so I will use the words, but the reality is, today, yesterday, tomorrow, until we've done this, it's critical for us to stay this course, and homelessness is that huge part of safety. Public safety, for me, and it's a huge part of healthcare.
So I want to just observe, because we've had a whole bunch of inputs, right, that coming into the session. One of them was the presentation that he gave you about 2014, and then 2017. Notice, the strategic priorities in 2014, one of them specifically said, "Public safety slash homelessness."
What year was that?
That was 2014.
14. Yeah, I remember voting that one.
That was the year that you had four. And it specifically expressed that, right? So if that is what you mean...
Are we bargaining? Are we allowed to bargain?
Are you what? Are you bargaining? Now, you're coming to consensus.
Go bargain.
So I can come to consensus with adding homelessness if we can add education and have five.
Now you're bargaining. Now there's a new game.
I like that. I'm with you.
I'll support that, because I was going to say that, if we wanted to also...
Public hearing, folks. We're doing this the right way. We got three votes. Let's have...
If we listen to our residents, their top three priorities were public safety, healthcare, and education.
And youth development and education.
And if we want to be a responsive government that listens to their constituency, we should incorporate education.
Okay.
Education and homelessness.
But again, let's get real, we are the city. We are not the state, and I've been with the state. I was an assemblywoman, as you two were. There is very little that the city can do for education. We can also be an advocate for education to our state. So when it comes to our city, Las Vegas priorities, education is ranked four, because there's... Our hands are tied. The things that have been toply ranked by this body today is public safety, healthcare, and diversified economy. With those three top priorities, subcategorily, will be homelessness is public safety's number one. Then we have our parks and open space, which is part of the real estate. We have our arts and culture, part of diversified economy, because when you have corporate partners that can support, everything boils back down to, how are we going to pay for it? So unless we diversify the economy and create these partnerships to pay for everything, these are the top three. So I'm gonna stick with Punim, stick with what we did, stay the course, I've got your back, please do it.
And by diversifying the education, I might say, it helps to pay for the homelessness and other programs. I think everything is all encompassing. I think that it's just we're categorizing it, public safety first, we need healthcare, mental, to help the homeless. And if we don't diversify economy, then we can't help anyone.
So it does... Just on this topic of homelessness, you've heard now, last few minutes, do we want to call it... Do you want to call it public safety slash homelessness?
No, no, it's already...
Well, because then it's healthcare homelessness, too. It's healthcare homelessness, too.
So homelessness encompasses everything.
Yes.
Homelessness...
If there's homelessness, you will not have a diversified economy. You will not have an economy, because everything will move out of this city to where the homeless aren't.
That's right.
And that is the critical mass to inviting. And we've heard the reason, one of the singularly most important reasons we lost the Raider interest was because of homelessness in the heart of downtown. So the economy, if we don't fix the homeless issue for the health of the whole community, as well as those caught in that horrible cycle, if we don't fix that, everything fails.
Bargaining's not happening. But what we want to try to get to, because people looking for leadership need this, so on behalf of those that are looking for the seven of you, we want pristine consensus.
I'm good.
Okay. And part of... And how we know we're getting pristine consensus is when people look us in the eye and say, this is what I believe, and I've got your back. And that's how we all roll, right? So that's... So the question becomes, what do we need to do to get you all there? We're real close. We're real close. We want you all there, because...
So, Councilwoman... So, city manager, and all of you fabulous directors out there that have helped me so much, I'm asking if you will please see this as a priority, public safety, healthcare, diversify the economy, which encompasses homelessness. And I have your back, and I will do everything I can to help you, to help our city to be number one, and the best it can be, and thank you. I feel like I'm...
No, you got the word in there, and as long as that becomes the mantra.
Yeah. So, thank you.
Okay, that's two.
I support the city of Las Vegas.
We know that.
Yeah, and I support the objectives of the city, and to support the group. This is where we're going with.
And I got your back.
I've always got everybody's back.
Exactly. I know you do. I know you do.
I'm good.
No, you gotta say it.
You gotta tell them.
I believe in that.
And...
And you have their back.
Yeah.
Of course. And as stated by Councilwoman Seaman, specifically, as she said it, you know, I have your back. I've always had your back from the day you took the office, and of course, my family at the city, every one of you. You have made this city what it is today. And I know, as I look each of you in the eye from far away, you are why the city works. You have built it, you stayed with it through past years, and you are the reason this works. And you support and follow the lead of our wonderful city manager. So you have, as you stated it, encompassing the homeless as part of it.
Absolutely.
I'm there, and have your back.
Yeah, I would comment, one of the most interesting things about being in office is if you ever disagree with another elected official, the world around you thinks that you're bitter enemies, and that is absolutely not the case at all. You can exist in the same space and have disagreements and get along really well. And I think it is the conflict that makes us a stronger city. So the fact that we have different thoughts and different ideas makes us a stronger group of leaders, and it makes us a stronger community because of that. So I fully support public safety, healthcare, and a diversify economy as the top three priorities, given the conversation that we've had today and all the things that are important up there, because all of it is incredibly well-connected. You can't have any of these conversations about these top three priorities without talking about those things in every conversation. So I have the city's back and have this back of this council.
And those people.
They all know that already.
They all know that.
Look at them every day. I have your back, everyone in the city of Las Vegas. It's my home, I'm glad I came back to it. I love the city of Las Vegas.
Although, you're still carrying a little bit of resentment about the money that you[1715.23]
So I fully support public safety, healthcare, and a diversify economy as the top three priorities, given the conversation that we've had today and all the things that are important up there, because all of it is incredibly well-connected. You can't have any of these conversations about these top three priorities without talking about those things in every conversation. So I have the city's back and have this back of this council.
And those people.
They all know that already.
They all know that.
Work them every day. I have your back, everyone in the city of Las Vegas. It's, it's my home, I'm glad I came back to it, I love the city of Las Vegas.
Although you're still carrying a little bit of resentment about the money that you never got from Tom. Just like, let's be clear.
Two, two years of carpooling, by the way.
Yeah, a lot of money. A little bit of resentment, a little bit.
And I got a Prius because of him, because I was trying to be environmentally friendly, but it still took gas.
And Tom bought a truck.
Ooh.
With all the money he saved.
It's because I bought a Prius, he was trying to balance out the world.
But he bought a truck, along with my big old F-350 truck, too, so I'm right with him.
Thank you, and I'm right in sync with my colleagues and the mayor. You obviously have had our backs, because the work doesn't stop ever. We can't let a ball drop, and I echo the sentiments of Councilwoman Seaman, that you guys have been extraordinary and supportive, and helping us see through very complicated issues that come before us. And, you know, I have your back, just like you've had mine, and I declare then, public safety, healthcare, and diversifying the economy as the city council's next set of priorities.
Great, thank you. Hell of a good job, people. Now, I can say stuff at that, the public meeting, because I'm not subjected to the same pressures and stuff as you are, right? Hell of a good job. It is not easy to do what you do, even on an easy day. It's a much different ballgame when you're brought in to a session like this for six hours, ask questions as bizarre as some of the ones that I asked you. Thank you for going. I mean, for me, it just reveals even more about how spectacular you are. And remember, we follow people, not strat plans. And so ultimately, leadership is a function of, to what extent will I be authentic? To what extent will I have the honest, earnest conversations? To what extent will I tell the truth in public? Because when I do that, as scary as it is to go there, it is when people will follow me with a vigor that otherwise is impossible, right? And that's our life experience. Isn't that what we've experienced in life? As we think about the people that we'll go anywhere for, they're not the people who are perfect, they're the people who have allowed us witness to their imperfection, right? To their hopes and dreams and fears, fears and anxiety, that's who we'll go sort of through walls and windows for. So thank you, it takes a ton of courage to do what you just did. So I just wanted, if I had a hat on, I would take it off. And again, just reminding you that courage, when I see it, I now believe is simply a person willing to get vulnerable.
And from all of us, Puna, mother, you're the best, and we appreciate how you have taken us and walked us through this and held the attention, given us the games to play on the process, and we really appreciate everything you've done, too.
Very sweet. We are going to give you some change back. I do want to leave you with a story, if you'll indulge me. And it was something, Councilman Carr, that you mentioned, and you used the word blessing, and you talked about face. And I think that gave me permission to talk in a slightly different context, and so I'm going to do that now. Here was a profound lesson for me, so I'm going to share it with you, and I hope it's useful. August 19th, 2013, I was reading the Las Vegas Review Journal, which I do every morning. And like I do every morning, I scanned, I was scanning the obituaries. I don't spend a lot of time there, I just scan, and there was a young face, and I always notice a young face or a particularly old face, and I always look at the age, I don't know why, I'm just curious like that. If it's a really old person, anyone over 90, 95, for a split second, I have a sense of, wow, what a wonderful, long life lived. I hope they claimed the things that they wanted for their epitaph, just for a second. And when I see any kind of young face for a second, I will pause, split second, and contemplate and send a little love to a family that's got to make sense of what is really hard to make sense of. So this one day, there was a 27-year-old, her name was Jessica. See, her name's 27. I had a son roughly that age, and so for a second, I'm like, oof, there's a family in pain, I send a little love. Very long obituary, and there were some words in the middle of this long obituary that I could tell, my only job was to catch the words as they left off the newspaper, and I did. And I caught them on a note card, and the note card today says the following words: "I have pockets of joy and gratitude, because in a universe of incalculability and in the vastness of time, for a couple of moments, we were together." So every morning, I choose to begin my day by selecting a perspective. And so the note card, Jessica embodied in the note card, was on my bulletin board. And lots of mornings, I would look up and she would offer me the perspective. And the perspective was, "In a universe of incalculability and in the vastness of time, all of a sudden, the same sunrises and sunsets that I've seen in this community for over three decades, in the context that in, there were 7.8 billion people on the planet in that moment, and I was the only one who got that specific view of that sunset, made it spectacularly more beautiful, gave me a sense of gratitude that was a whole new level." And even the jerk that cut me off on the Sahara overpass, sometimes the jerk is there. But even when that jerk cut me off, thanks to Jessica, I had this perspective of, wow, in a universe of incalculability and the vastness of time, I'm not sure, but you're my jerk. Nobody else gets this experience, I'm grateful. And you're going to teach me something. So Jessica was teaching me profound lessons, right, about the power of perspective, how she deepened my gratitude. She was really a bit of a guide and a teacher and a spiritual advisor for me. And then every once in a while, when I'd get asked to speak somewhere, sometimes it was as though Jessica just said, "I'm going to." And there I would be with the note card, because the note card chose to go. And I would share the story of Jessica, and people would get moved, and sometimes they would cry, and I had no idea what the intense personal relationship was between those people and Jessica. But what I understood was how blessed I was to have had a role in a legacy where I would never meet the human being. And in a universe of incalculability and the vastness of time, that made perfect sense. It's all that I don't know, it's how I don't understand ripples and cause and effect, and A to B, it just is so much bigger than my comprehension. So I'm merely learning to, I'm developing a really deep relationship with my BFF, my spiritual guide, my inspiration. I am honored to be a link in the chain that allows her voice to get expressed, it's just pretty cool. I got my hair cut every two weeks, a guy named Fred. 20 minutes, was that funny? Oh. David, do you go to Fred? That was a really random moment to respond, David Regal, right? We were all thinking it, I just said it, that's all. So I'm downloading the power and the lessons of Jessica, and I can see his reflection in the mirror in front of me, because he's behind me, and he freezes. And then I can watch emotion well and start to leak out his eyes, the man is crying. I'm confused, I said, "What happened?" He said, "I love how you're talking about her. She's an inspiration, she's a light, she's perspective, she's a teacher, she's inspiring people." And I said, "Why?" She said, reaches over, grabs his phone, shows me a picture, I now know that face, it's Jessica. And he said, "I know her, I'm like a, in a universe of incalculability, my girlfriend, Jessica, nothing surprises me, so I am not surprised you know her, but tell me why you're crying." Said, "Here's the thing you need to know, the story, as you're describing it, is different than the one I know." Because the story of Jessica I know is that she got into a relationship with an abusive boy at the age of 16. At the age of 18, that abusive boy burnt down the home that she was sleeping in, resulting in massive burns over the majority of her body, which led to the introduction to the pain medication, that was the only way to get relief, which then became the newest journey to hell. And the final action for her was, by my own hand, action of suicide, I will take my own life. That was the obituary that I saw on August 19th, 2013. So, powerful lesson for me, the story of Jessica. She reminds me that we don't know much, because if I only look at the segment, and I mean the segment, that as Jessica's 26, 27 years on, in the world, it could be simply sad. And yet, if I zoom out into a universe of incalculability and the vastness of time, everything is as it's meant to be, everything. I don't understand why, but I certainly get reminders of it. And Jessica, for me, is the number-one reminder. All of that to say, on February 26th, 2020, in this little city, in this big world, in the vastness of time, in the monster that is this universe, the seven of you are together. So I'm going to go back to the words that I wrote down that day. "I have pockets of joy and gratitude, because in a universe of incalculability and in the vastness of time, for a couple of moments, we were together." You have no idea how far your ripples will extend, you just will never know. But however we can show up, if we can trust, if we can be brave, if we can say stuff that no one else will say, if we can have each other's back in a way that makes us uncomfortable, then do it. Then do it, because every lesson that we've ever learned in the rest of our lives says, that's how real life works, right? So I can't tell you how blessed I feel that, in this moment, I don't know why, there's 2 million people, there's seven of you, we know that, and then one incredibly lucky, low-grade infection that got to hang out with you all day. So I want to say thank you, and you now have 18 minutes change, because you've done such a good job. Do you want to say anything?
So, first of all, I want to say that you've made me the envy of every city manager of every major city in America, because I, as I speak to my colleagues and peers, it is not often that you can get your council in a room, and in a very short period of time, reach consensus on a set of high-level priorities. So you have accomplished the ultimate in policymaking. And so I both congratulate you and thank you as your city manager and our staff team for doing this. So the conversation you just had cuts both ways. I support, and we will support, these three priorities, and we will have your back on these three priorities. And you'll see that through the effort that we'll take over the next few months, we're going to now take these and all the other things that you established as important things that we should be accomplishing, and put those into a much greater level of detail and bring it back to you. And our hope would be you would endorse that with possibly changes and modifications, and then it'll be our job to get out there and get it done.
Thank you.
So, again, I can't underscore how much we thank you for helping us with this effort.
Thank you, Mr. Adams, and thank you all. We have a second public hearing. So is there anyone from the public who would wish to address the council? We will not respond, but we certainly would give you your right to do so. All right, hearing and seeing, no one for us? Yes, you did want to say something?
Yeah, before your turn?
Before I turn.
Because we do have, like, 16 minutes, so it's hard to give back that much time, right?
We want every penny out of you we can get.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, it's not hard to give back time, don't, please, no, it is not.
What I'd like for, because that was just really awesome, what you just did. So we started at the beginning of the morning, right, by going to every single one, giving them one word, and they express their hope. And so now I'm going to go back, if you don't mind.
You're going to take the whole 16 minutes.
I'm going to give you one word, no, because you should see how fast they did it, you remember, punch like popcorn, we're going to do this really fast. The one word that you want to express to this awesome group of seven human beings that give selflessly, because they care that deeply. So we're starting with you. One word.
Peace.
Peace.
Gratitude.
Gratitude.
Clarity.
Clarity.
Compassion. Appreciation.
Appreciation.
Gratitude.
Gratitude.
Ambition.
Ambition.
Direction.
Got to go with appreciation as well.
How many words was that? Appreciation. Passion.
Consensus.
Consensus. Thank you.
Appreciation.
Appreciation.
Synergy.
Synergy.
Enthusiasm.
Appreciation.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Passion.
Passion.
Awesome.
Collaboration.
Gratitude.
Gratitude.
Inspiration.
Inspiration.
Thoughtfulness.
Thoughtfulness. Collaboration.
Consensus.
Consensus. Conviction.
Direction.
Direction.
Grateful.
Grateful.
Inclusive.
Inclusive.
Stewardship.
Stewardship.
Truth, love, strength, one word.
What? Truth hyphen love hyphen strength.
Connection.
Connection.
Clarity.
Clarity.
Fulfillment.
Fulfillment.
Guidance.
Guidance.
Leadership.
Leadership. Clarity.
Determined.
Determined, coming back to you.
Appreciation.
Appreciation.
Leadership. Inspired.
Inspired.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Gratitude.
Gratitude.
Focused.
Focused. We got you, right?
Direction.
Direction.
Collaboration.
Collaboration.
Peace.
Peace. Harmony.
Impactful.
Impactful.
Guidance.
Guidance.
Leadership.
Leadership.
Compassion.
Compassion. That was not 16 minutes, Councilman Carr, how many, you still get some change back, I promise. Yes, thank you. Oh, my gosh, we don't leave people behind. Support.
Proud.
Proud.
Deliberative.
Deliberative, thank you. And then, as it should be, we're going to have, you all have the final last word, ending with you, right? So your last word.